Good evening. It's now 6:00 PM in the regular session of the Planning Commission. The city of Lancaster will come to order. Tonight, our invocator will be Vice Chairman Hall, and Mr. Tarassiano will lead us in the pledge. If you all please stand.
Dear God, we seek your help with our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of our own. We are of diverse opinion here, yet we wish to mend our differences and reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share a little of your wisdom with us to help us do right by all concern. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. We pray in your name. Amen.
The roll call, please.
Commissioners Diana Cook.
Present.
Cassandra Harvey.
Present.
Raj Molly. Absent. Sandy Smith.
Here.
Fabian Tarassiano.
Here.
Vice Chair Randy Hall.
Here.
Chairman James Boz.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is offered at this time that you may give input regarding agenda items. Individual speakers would be limited to two minutes each. Do we have any early speakers, Mr. Liddick?
None that have indicated, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Therefore, any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identifying the agenda item you'd like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the Planning Commission at the time such item is discussed by the Planning Commission. Speaker's cards are available at the rear of the chamber. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. I might point out that applicants, at the pleasure of the commission, have an unlimited opportunity to present their projects, and at the end of their presentation, when speakers, individual speakers have an opportunity for their three minutes, at the end of that time, the applicant will have an opportunity to rebut. That's our process, and it's been our process since we've been a commission. The first item on our calendar is our consent agenda, which is the approval of the regular meeting of August 20, 2012. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of August 20, 2012.
Thank you.
May I second?
Thank you. All right, please vote. I was absent at that meeting. I think you were too, Ms. Smith. So we will be abstaining.
Motion passes 4-0 with two abstentions.
And Commissioner Molly is absent as well, right? I don't know if that's my cellphone or somebody else's, but we'd appreciate it if you shut them off. Thank you. The next agenda item is a continued public hearing. This is on the residential zone updates. Is it the commission's pleasure to hear that now, or do you want to move it to the end of the agenda and we can take up the items that probably most of the folks are here for? Want to take it up now, or do you want to move it to the end? Want to move it to the end?
Please.
Yes.
All right then. So without objection, we'll move item two to the end of our agenda. The next item is item number three, which is a continued public hearing on conditional use permit 1107. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter, and I'm assuming we have speakers on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right then. May we have a staff report, please?
Chairman Boz and Commissioners, before you tonight is a 10-megawatt photovoltaic solar electric generating facility in the rural residential zone. The project site is vacant and is zoned RR 2.5. The proposed project would operate year-round, producing a total of 10 megawatts of renewable electric power during daytime hours. Power generated by the proposed project would be sold to California Edison. The proposed project consists of rows of photovoltaic panels. These panels would either be fixed or mounted on trackers, depending on the chosen technology. These photovoltaic panels would convert sunlight directly into electrical energy without the use of heat transfer fluid or cooling water. Six inverter electrical pads, equipment pads would be located throughout the project site. A substation would be located on the northeastern portion of the project site and would feed the electricity to the antelope substation located at 90th Street West and Avenue J via Gent High Line. A chain link fence would surround the project site, and a 10-foot landscaped area would be provided between the fence and the property line to screen the development from surrounding uses. This landscaping is likely to be native and would be drought tolerant. Access to the project site would be provided via a gate on Avenue J. Irrevocable offers of dedication would be provided for Avenue J, Avenue J-4, 110th Street West, and 107th Street West. Avenue J and 110th Street West would be dedicated at 50 feet from center line, and Avenue J-8 and 107th Street West would be dedicated at 32 feet from center line. A master plan of drainage facility is proposed to run through the southeastern corner of the project site. This earthing channel is proposed to be 50 feet wide and seven feet deep. The applicant shall provide an irrevocable offer of dedication for this future facility. The proposed project has the potential to impact views from the surrounding roads and nearby residences. The photovoltaic panels would be approximately 10 feet high, with a maximum height of 14 feet. The specific height of the panels is dependent on the specific technology and panels chosen. The proposed project would generate environmental impacts during construction with respect to biological resources, geology, and soils, and noise. The construction of the proposed project has the potential to impact burrowing owls and coast horn lizards during vegetation removal and grading operations, even though these species were not found during the original surveys of the project site. The applicant is required to conduct pre-construction burrowing owl and coast horn lizard surveys prior to the issuance of any permits. Additionally, there are several swales located on the project site. These swales do not contain riparian vegetation or riparian habitat. However, the California Department of Fishing Game or the Regional Water Quality Control Board could claim jurisdiction over the swales as waters of the state or under the Porter Cologne Act respectively. The applicant is required to coordinate with both agencies and obtain a stream bed alteration agreement and/or report of waste discharge permit if deemed necessary. The applicant would be required to prepare and implement a dust control plan in accordance with AVA QMD Rule 403, which should ensure that impacts from dust during construction are minimal. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. There may be some from the members? Any questions? All right then. I would like to point out to the audience tonight, and it's just really a matter of procedure, these public hearings tonight on these three PV projects, 1107, 1208, and 1209, have obviously become somewhat controversial. The commission intends to conduct these hearings with respect and proper decorum pursuant to Government Code 54957.9. These hearings are not intended to be an entertainment venue. Proper order will be maintained. We understand that many speakers may be offering testimony tonight. There may be some certainly emotion, and we respect that. However, every citizen deserves their opportunity to speak. When called upon to speak, please address your testimony through the chair to the commission members. We thank you in advance for your participation this evening, and we welcome your input. So the public hearing is open, and may we hear from the applicant if they choose to offer comment? Please state your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name's Garrett Bean. I'm with Silverado Power.
Good evening.
Hello, Commissioners, Chairman Boz, fellow Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to hear this project again. I know that we went over this project last month. I think some of you had time to review the material that weren't here, and I know there were site visits conducted as well. So I won't go through the presentation for Silverado on this project specifically, but we are here for any questions that you may have. And we've also brought a biologist along. If you guys have any questions for him, he'd be glad to take some of us, so.
Yeah, and for the record, you have submitted a letter indicating that you agree to all the conditions as proposed by staff. That's correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Do I have any speakers, Mr. Liddick?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mel Lane.
All right, Mr. Lane. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Boz. My name is Mel Lane. I'm the president of the Greater Antelope Valley Economic Alliance, which mission is to attract and bring businesses to the Antelope Valley. A number of years ago, when it became evident that the Antelope Valley was going to be targeted because of the new transmission line of development of solar energy, we set about to enlist, bringing in a number of solar developers, and have worked with them on a consistent basis. In fact, their total investment today is $10 billion. And that, not today, but as their permitting goes forward, the total value of the project would be $10 million. One under construction now has 700 construction people that's planning on jumping to 1,100 construction people, is providing construction jobs to an area that is depressed with high unemployment. We strongly recommend that the commission take a hard look at the projects that are being developed that are going to provide jobs and opportunity for an area that is depressed and needs that type of jobs. Actually, the number of projects in permitting will provide enough energy to supply energy for all of the single-family homes in LA County, which amount to about 1.7 million. It's a huge deal. And it's a great economic benefit. The city of LA, or not the city of LA, the county of LA is going to receive $12 million alone in sales tax on one project, just one project coming in the area. I've testified before the LA Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors in both LA and Kern County on behalf of those projects. I would say this, that we believe that the Antelope Valley is a great place for renewable energy. Those who worry about that the whole area is going to be covered with renewable energy is ill-founded, because already the line that's 4,500 megawatts is overscribed, hugely overscribed, in fact, oversubscribed in an amount equal to more than what Edison has in their total system. So it will come to an end, because there won't be a way to bring it to use. And it's great that we're getting that job and that investment and that economic income from that particular industry today. And we hope that it'll continue for the future until that capacity of that transmission line is no longer available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Next speaker, please.
Yes, John Dewar, or Dewar.
Good evening, sir, and welcome. I'll try not to butcher your last name. Dewar? Dewar, just like the Scotch.
Right.
I recently am working on one of the solar projects here in the Antelope Valley. And working on that, I see people who live here in the Antelope Valley who are saving their houses. They're able to spend money in the community. I see people from the age of 18 all the way up to 70 who are very happy to be able to work and work on something that is so environmentally sound. They enjoy the fact that they can pay their bills. I see this as nothing but good for our community, and I'm in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Have another speaker? Evening, Mr. Gomez. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Dave Gomez. I represent the National Electrical Contractors Association and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I want to talk a little bit about these projects. Basically, it's putting people to work their careers, because we have an apprenticeship program, five years, so they'll be doing solar, but they'll also be doing other things in the community. I represent over 600 electrical contractors in LA County and over 10,000 electricians in Los Angeles. These projects are moving forward, and they're going to create jobs. Another thing, too, is it's environmentally safe, like the gentleman said, Mr. Dewar. It also keep, in the long run, keep us from depending on oil. I mean, we're always going to have oil, but this is one way of making it more environmentally safe. Thank you, and I'm in favor of the project.
I apologize in advance if I butcher this. Pat Cioto.
Thank you for pronouncing it correctly. You're with me. I just got over a heart attack. I'm a little slow.
Good evening, sir, and welcome.
Good evening. I'm president of the Fairmont Town Council. I'm one of the fellows that negotiated the agreement with NRG. And then you've got ABSR-1, then you've got Silverado, then you have renewable resources coming in, which is 5,000 acres. And one of the major things that the people in my area, Antelope Acres, and God forbid, Osalo area, they're tired of looking at junkyards. You're going down the road, and you see junkyards. Now, the county is working with ABSR-1, and they're going to be putting in low-lying, water-tolerant plant life. So you're still going to look at the junkyard. Now, NRG agreed to put a line of trees around their thing, which is 4,800 trees, and that's considerable cost, and they don't have the slightest bit of trouble from the locals. All the locals are raising hell with ABSR-1 and any of the other, all the other solar companies. Now, the problem comes, is I read your CU piece, the 54 page and the 94 page that you had, and it says nothing in there on site break or sound barriers or anything like that. Now, you do specify in there that their sound will not mitigate past the property line. This is good, but how are you going to keep the sound from going past if you're using low-lying drought-tolerant plants? There's two kinds of drought-tolerant trees in this area, and about 14 drought-tolerant high bushes. If you want to do something halfway decent to keep people from screaming and yelling eventually in the future, you might try and add a little more landscaping around it, and that'll eliminate a lot of sound, a lot of complaints, a lot of site break, and it reduces dust. Now, as far as 55 seconds, okay. As far as ABSR-1 goes on getting a lot of jobs around here, as the president of the town council, I get some privileged information, just like you gentlemen do. And I find that a lot of the people working there are from Arizona and Nevada, who came here, purchased houses, because they get $10,000 a month per diem, and then they sign up as their address that they have here. Ergo, they're qualified as locals. I'd like you guys to address that problem on these new projects coming in here, where they don't bring people in from out of state, give them houses, and give them the local address, and they're quote quasi-locals. A lot of the people in my area, right smack dab in the middle of it, are not employed or have been laid off. A lot of the people from Lancaster are employed.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Time's expired. Have another speaker, please? Evening, Mr. Chance, and welcome.
Hello. Okay, I've lived in this area now for over 10 years. I own a home. I'm an electrician. I work on one of the solar sites. Obviously, I don't want to drive it into the ground about reducing the carbon signature or anything like that. For me personally, a few months ago, I was on the verge of foreclosure. I was losing my home. These jobs have brought me back, you know, back in the black, and I'm doing a lot better these days. Projects have put a lot of people to work. There are local contractors involved. It's just a good thing for the whole area. That's really all I got.
Thank you for your comments. Another speaker, please?
Susan Zanter.
I didn't clearly hear the last name. What was it?
Zan, oh, Zanter.
Evening, Ms. Zanter, and welcome.
Thank you so much. Pleased to be here. My question concerns the mitigated negative declaration prepared for this project, both of the Silverado projects. I have questions about whether piecemealing is at stake here. Los Angeles County is reviewing six other Silverado projects and requiring an environmental impact review. They also state that there are adjacent projects totaling 16,924 acres. To me, that is a huge cumulative impact to consider, not just these two smaller projects. I won't call them really small. And that's my concern, that the mitigated negative declaration isn't going to address completely substantial impacts to the scenic viewshed, especially around the famous Poppy Reserve, and also air quality problems. ABSR-1, following best management practices, has been unable to control fugitive dust. And in the MND, I read that the responsibility for taking resident complaints about dust falls on the project manager. I think that there needs to be a higher level besides the air quality management district for people to come to in the event that these air quality problems cannot be addressed properly. Also, in regard to the cumulative impacts on the map back there in the book, on item 9C-07, landscape zone to be omitted on the east and south sides of the project if adjacent parcels are developed for solar power generation by the same applicant. And according to SEQA, all future and proposed reasonably foreseeable projects need to be considered in the document. And I didn't see that in the MND, so those were my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Another speaker? Evening, Ms. Hartman, and welcome.
Okay. My name is Ashley Hartman, and today I hope to show you the bigger picture that the people of Antelope Acres are looking at. You, the planning commission, are currently faced with only a few plans from Silverado, whereas we, as a community, are facing a future of 33 total solar plants from different companies. The people of Antelope Acres have chosen to separate our lives and ourselves from the traffic, the noise, the lights, and the businesses that are in the city. So to be faced with not just one, but 33 future farms that will be running for around 35 years takes away any reason for us to stay in Antelope Acres. I have grown up in Antelope Acres, went to Delsur School, which is going to be surrounded by one of these proposed sites, I think it's the last proposition, and just purchased my first home, where my fiancee and I, who also grew up in Antelope Acres, plan to start our lives and live together and begin a family. But once my new home, which can be seen on Silverado's brochure, is surrounded by one of the proposed farms, not only will it have horrible resale value, but when our personal wells run dry because all of our groundwater is used or is contaminated and deemed unusable, who will want to live there? When it becomes overrun by the wildlife and the poisonous snakes due to the noise from the job sites, who will want to live there? Many of my neighbors have said that if these farms begin construction, that they would step away from their homes. I know people who have lived in those homes their entire life, and for them to step away from them is heartbreaking. Silverado Power views our town and our community of Antelope Acres as ugly and needed upgrading. That barn that they showed last time as an eyesore is rustic and part of the landscaping and has meaning. Even if you do not agree, do you really want to see acres of metal, glass, chain link in its place? Imagine 33 sites on the west side of the Antelope Valley. Did you really move to the Antelope Valley in hopes to see it used and abused by big business? I don't think so. Our valley used to be known for agriculture and aerospace, things that our communities used to profit from. What did these solar farms give us? Destruction of our land, disruption of our wildlife, contamination and waste of our groundwater, and potential illness and disease. They do increase the workforce temporarily. However, they offer no permanent jobs and no permanent economical increase. Silverado has completed no projects as a company. The company's head advisors have experience, but Silverado to date, according to what we've been told as a community by them, has not built a single solar farm. They are relying on the failings and successes of other companies to sell these farms, and I don't want to be Silverado's testing grounds. I love our town and our community too much to watch it be destroyed and let down by empty promises. Contrary to what Silverado believes, we do not want money, parks, trees, or mitigation of any kind. We just want to continue our rural way of life. We are not against solar or green power. We are against the disruption and destruction of our community. There are other places to build, and why shouldn't they have to work around us for a change? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. And for the record, we did receive a letter from you that you just read into the record. However, it didn't identify the specific project, so it's for all three projects, obviously. Thank you. Next speaker, please? Evening, Ms. Hartman. You might be related to the last, Ms. Hartman?
Just maybe a little bit.
Very good.
Luckily. Good evening. My name's Terry Hartman. I spoke at the last meeting regarding this matter last month. I am grateful for the time you have taken in regards to this matter, and I realize you will probably pass this proposal this evening, but I am happy to be given another chance to speak. First, I would like to say to Silverado that I feel you gave this committee the idea that we are just mad because you have not offered us any money or maybe a community center or park. Let me make this clear. The only thing you can do for our community is move your projects out of our backyards. To this committee, I would like to say that this company can make all the promises they want, however the company, as has already been previously said, has never built a solar plant. They have no models. We've asked for models. The models we have are already in place in our community, and it's a sad situation. Mr. Vice Chairman, you stated last month that you have seen the chain link that surrounds the solar fields off of 138, and you're fine with them. However, I doubt you enjoy waking up each morning to see them outside your back door. Silverado has severely underestimated the amount of water they will need for this project. One project alone will not affect the water table, and when each of these projects are brought to in pieces, they don't look as bad. Please look at the bigger picture of what you're doing to our community. Our kids deserve... Our kids deserve better. All we want is for them to move their plants away from our community. It might be more costly for the solar companies, but it'd make this community a lot more supportive of these projects if they were not so close to our homes or our schools. If there are no changes made, we will continue to fight at every level. We will not go away. We are voicing our opinions, something that we were not given a chance to do when all of this started. We'd like to ask for an EIS to be done for the entire west valley. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Have another speaker, please?
Kath- Kathy Porter.
I hope I heard that right. Could you say it again for the record, please?
Catherine Porter.
Oh, Ms. Porter, all right. Thank you, and welcome.
I'm here to speak in general about all the, all three solar projects that are on the agenda. My concern is primarily environmental. You're probably all aware that there's two kinds of solar generation that's going on, and one is the utility-scale large plants, like we're talking about tonight, and the other is distributed generation, which is the rooftop. Solar is an example of that. And I would like to commend the city for encouraging all the rooftop solar, all the parking lot solar that's gone up throughout the city. That is the form that I am in favor of. Excuse me. I really enjoyed coming in and parking under the solar panels here tonight. But the utility-scale solar that's going on the ground is not environmentally sound. It destroys the ground. It destroys the habitat. It's now, projects are being proposed, not only for the west Anlo Valley, but all over the deserts of California and Arizona, Nevada, et cetera. We have a wide-scale destruction of desert land going on because of it. Aside from how it destroys the land, it also requires transmission lines, as one of the earlier speakers said. The transmission lines have to travel over many miles. Some electricity is lost during the transmission, so that affects the efficiency of it. And once again, it disrupts our rural communities where the lines go through, and we have battles over where we're going to put them. So, for these reasons, I am in general against solar on the ground, tearing up our land. I enjoy seeing it on the rooftop. That's the way to go. I would like to encourage you all to listen to the heartfelt comments that people are making, and take it to heart, and reduce the number. Let's not have so many of these projects going on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have another speaker, Mr. Lutick?
Don Dykhouse.
Say the last name again. Dykhouse?
Dykhouse.
Dykhouse.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Don Dykhouse, and I am here to speak about the concerns I have, along with many of others in my community that I've spoken to, about having these solar fields installed so close to the school. I'd like to start by saying that I grew up in the Anlo Bakers. I attended Delsir School from third through eighth grade. After my husband got out of the Navy, he's also from the Anlo Valley, we decided to move home. It was already in the plan to move back to the Lancaster area, but we decided on Anlo Bakers for two reasons. First, so that our children could attend Delsir School, and second, so my kids could grow up in the same way we did, in a rural area as 4-H members, surrounded by agriculture, not solar panels as far as the eye could see. As a parent, I'm deeply disturbed about the number of solar fields being installed in our area, and I am just as upset about the fact that this particular project is a total of 293 acres, speaking of one of the two Silverados that are on the record for tonight, which is right up to the edge of the school. This is not a small project. The construction on this project will create a large amount of dust that will be blowing into the school. It's not a small amount of normal dust blowing down a dirt road. It's nearly 300 acres of dirt and dust blowing right into the school. Can you imagine the potential health risk of kids being exposed to this amount of dirt for a long period of time? Not to mention the wildlife that will be displaced. Contrary to what might have been said, there is wildlife out there. The wild rabbits, squirrels, mice, and snakes, which us living out in Anlo Bakers know exists, we see them every day, all the time. Where are these going to go? Right into the school. The photovoltaic panels contain cadmium, arsenic, and lead, which is toxic to humans and animals. What about the health risks of that alone? And having these toxic materials seep into the water table and into the well that our kids drink water from? Solar is far too new for inadequate studies to be done about the long-term hazards of having it near the school, where our kids will be all day for most of the year. And our kids in Anlo Bakers and the other areas out there will not be able to get away from them, because they're being discussed here tonight is not the only ones that are being planned. Between the projects under the City of Lancaster and LA County, there are a total of thirty-three proposed sites. We will be completely surrounded. So in closing, I would just like to ask you to ask yourselves these questions, and really be honest with yourselves. How would you feel if this were your kid's school? How would you feel if there was a company going to come into where you live and completely surround you, decreasing the value of your home? Would you want to live near all of this solar?
Thank you for your comments. Do we have another speaker?
Dan Shaughnessy.
All right. It seemed to me that the last speaker was speaking actually on 1208 and 1209, as opposed to 1107, but that's okay. Mr. Shaughnessy, and welcome.
Thank you. As before, my name is Dan Shaughnessy. I actually moved out into the Anlo Bakers with my parents when we entered the fourth, when I entered the fourth grade. I did that whole, "I'm an adult, I'm out of here." It wasn't more than eight months later, I moved out of Torrance into a really, really nice city, but I could not wait till I could afford to move back. I worked really hard and spent a lot of time and effort putting away the money in order to move out into the Anlo Bakers. Now I'm moving out there, I worked really hard to choose where I chose because I loved the school. I went there myself, also from fourth grade through eighth grade, which is the highest level at Delsir School. It's very disturbing to me that here the plants are coming right up onto the outside of the school, and not a single parent was notified that the school is being, you know, they had to notify the school, but nobody's notified the parents that attend that school. It's worrisome to me about the health risks that are involved. Thirty-three plants is a very large number of individual places that are planning on coming in. Nothing against solar. Green energy is good. But there's also a limit to how much you expect the people living in that area to go ahead and feel encroached on, disregarded, and expected to deal with the consequences without going ahead and considering the fact that after twenty, twenty-five years, these plants will be no longer good, and they're going to have to tear them down or replace the panels. Most of them have said they're just tearing them down. What are they going to do with that land afterwards? Please, take into consideration what the people who put into this community want for it. It's really important to us. Nothing against solar. Thirty-three, one, two maybe. Distance from the school, that's kind of a, we're, some of us are ready to move because of it. So I appreciate your time, and again, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have another speaker?
Dolly Cannavan.
Evening, Ms. Cannavan, and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Dolly Cannavan, and I have been a resident of Anlo Bakers for 24 years. And as a longtime resident, I agree with the views of the others from my community. We do not want the solar companies coming in and surrounding us. I am here today to raise the concern regarding the water that will need to be used both during the construction and while the site is being used. We know that Silverado and any other solar company is mandated by the county to use only 500 acre-feet of groundwater. The project will need more water than that, so they will have to bring in reclaimed water. The concern is, what type of water, and what long-term effects will it have on our groundwater? Are these solar companies going to use secondary or tertiary water? Secondary water will eventually flood the ground with contaminants, in effect polluting our water and raising levels of harmful minerals. Since we know that the reason that these solar plants want to come to our areas is because it would be cheaper for them to hook up to the existing power lines and substations, we doubt very much that they are willing to spend the $400 per acre foot that it costs to get the better cherry-cherry water. How is the water going to be brought in? Are we going to install water lines that bring the water from the treatment facilities to their project sites? That could cause even a bigger construction issue. Or are they bringing the water trucks that could create a huge traffic problem for the area with that many trucks? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have another speaker, Mr. Lutick?
Robert Kerikas.
Good evening, Mr. Kerikas. And welcome.
Everybody. Glad to be here. My name's Robert Kerikas. I'm the President of Anlo Bakers Town Council. Our council has not taken a stand one way or another at this point on these projects, but probably will.
Would you say that again, please?
Our town council has not taken an official-
Has not. All right, thank you.
I'd like to speak to all three sites, Silverado sites, the one that's on J at 110th, I don't know well enough, but I have some of the same problems with all of them, and that is that for their, well, let me, let me start with the ones that, 1209 and 1208, because a farm has been added to that group. So a farm is going to be removed, and it was said that this farm, 58 acres, an alfalfa farm, is only 0.19% of prime farmland. I don't know if that's talking about all of Anlo Bakers or where. However, as you may know, we really don't have very much farmland that's actually being farmed anymore. The farmers have gone. We're not really producing carrots, we're not producing onions. Well, we got our alfalfa farms. Of those, we have goties across the street from the school, we got one at 60th between B and C, we got one at 120th Street near I, and we have some over around 104th Street between B and A, and some of them have also, are also going. This is a loss of locally-produced alfalfa. It's a loss of carbon dioxide that the alfalfa takes in. It's increased carbon dioxide from importing alfalfa into our area. It's a major loss of wildlife area because these alfalfa farms have a lot of wildlife around them. You may have, I think I handed out tonight, well, I handed out these, I think I sent them in last, last week, last month, rather, and-
Yeah, we have them. Thank you.
Okay, so these show you some of the wildlife there, and you have only one or two days that biological surveys are done. Really, people, that's pretty short, one or two days. These pictures I've got here were taken over a period of time, so you need to have time to go out and do surveys. And an environmental impact report, they have to have a lot of days, and these reports that you have here, it's very little days at all. I find that a problem. The school's going to be totally surrounded by these projects. I don't know what they're going to do for the school. Are they going to do any kind of mitigation for the school? Are they going to do anything to help give some kind of space, some setbacks, or something of that nature for the school? It seems to me like they really need to do that. And I noticed Lancaster, doesn't Lancaster have a green code? Aren't you guys required to have trees every 10 feet?
Thank you for your comments. Your time's expired. So, Mr. Lutick, the speakers didn't identify what they're speaking on, on the cards?
They've listed three different-
Oh, I see. All right. Fair enough.
But recall that the only item open at this point is the project that's CUP 1107. For those that have listed additional cases, we will call them back when the other cases are open.
That would be our procedure. Thank you.
Yes, and we are, we are at the end of the listed-
Okay.
Speaker's cards for item three.
We'll be here as long as there are speakers. All right, thank you. So, there's no further speakers on 11-07?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We'll keep the public hearing open and ask staff then to address the points raised. I've made a list of some, and as you go through them, I think you probably have identified a few as well. Just for the record, I want to make sure that we've got everything in the record. We did receive some correspondence from All Valley Surveying in favor of the project, obviously Silverado, and then Mr. Kerikas' comments, Ms. Hartman, we have correspondence on. It was actually a letter we received from Ms. Fuentes, I believe, F-U-E-N-T-E-S, addressing all three projects. I believe that's all the correspondence I have. Record of anyone else? Is that accurate on this item? Is that right, Mr. Lutick?
Yes, as far as I can tell, for item three.
All right, very good. So, could we hear from staff then on response to the speakers tonight, and the commission may have some questions as well?
I will answer as many as I have noted, and if I've missed any, please remind me. The first one I'm going to bring up is, the President of the Fairmont Town Council was tired of looking at junkyards in their area. We are requiring the projects to completely surround the entire perimeter of the site with landscaping, and that landscaping is required to grow up to exceed, match or exceed the height of the chain link fence. The purpose is to screen the site from, from view on the public roadways. We're requiring drought-tolerant plants because it makes no sense to irrigate, so you want something that is going to actually grow up and thrive in the area. On project sites that have existing trees and existing landscaping along the perimeter, we are asking the developer to incorporate that. We do not want it removed, as that existing vegetation is obviously happy and well-established.
On this particular site-
There is none.
There are none, right?
Correct. There were, the issue of piecemealing was brought up, and they referenced specifically the condition that is tied to 1107. Silverado in general is looking to acquire property throughout the valley. The east and south sides of that project site have open property, and if they were to acquire property and choose to move forward on that, that's when that condition applies. But the city has not received anything that would indicate that that property is scheduled for development. So this is basically, in the event that they were to acquire that and choose to submit a project, this is how we are choosing to deal with it. But there is nothing in the works on that property at the moment.
Yeah, to add to that, Mr. Chairman, I believe that that property that surrounds to the east and the south is in fact- to the east and the south is, in fact, currently designated as urban.
Correct.
Which means it cannot be used for a solar project in its current land use. They would have to actually apply for an amendment and zone change in the general plan and zoning of the city before they could actually make an application.
Urban means that you could have R-7000, or is that RR-2.5?
Actually, in this case, you could go to the urban density, which is up to, what, 6.6 units to the acre. However, there's a specific plan overlay that exists on that property, meaning that any kind of urban development project would have to first require the review and approval of a specific plan through the city.
Thank you.
So if someone was-- raised the issue about the utilization of water on a typical urban setting, individual residential property would use typically 1 acre-foot per year.
That is correct.
Yes.
And the estimate, the least that I've read on these projects, is substantially--
Less than that. That is correct. It doesn't apply so much to this project as it does to 1208 and 1209, where those project sites are actually--
But even in this case?
In this case, the property is owned RR-2.5. That 1 acre-foot per single-family residence is for an urban use, but that's approximately 325,000 and some change gallons per acre-foot. So you're talking about a substantial amount of water that could be utilized for residential purposes.
And these projects are estimated to use between, what, 2 and 5 acre-feet a year?
That's a high estimate. This particular site is estimated to use about 1 acre-foot per year.
As opposed to 40--
If we just assumed how many-- RR-2.5 at 40 acres, you're looking at 40, so maybe 40 acre-feet. So there's a big difference in the amount of water that would be consumed.
Between 2 and 40, this is a substantial difference.
It is.
Thank you.
And continuing on with the water, the issue of secondary versus tertiary for construction, they would be required to use tertiary. The wastewater treatment plant is in the process and almost done with converting to tertiary-treated water, so secondary would not be available. Tertiary-treated water, by state-of-California standards, can be utilized on anything except direct human contact, so you can't drink it, but you can water apple orchards, cherry orchards. You can do pretty much anything else with it besides swim in it and drink it. And they would be required to actually obtain that kind of water for dust control of their project site. With respect to groundwater, there may be some existing wells on the project site. They weren't found, but the possibility, since it was agged, that they could undercover some exists. They have the right to use those wells if they are there. They do not have the right to drill new wells. And if they are not going to be using those water wells that may or may not exist on the site, then they're required to close them in accordance with all existing regulations. With respect to rooftop and parking lot solar, that is one type of distributed generation. Distributed generation can also refer to small-scale commercial that ties directly into the distribution lines that run typically through your neighborhood. So some of your smaller solar sites also qualify as distributed generation. In the state of California, up to 5% of the peak load of a territory-- so Edison's territory, up to 5% of the peak demand can be provided from what's called behind-the-meter projects. And those are-- those projects on rooftops, on your house, on your business, the solar shade structures in the parking lot, those provide electricity to the use that's on the property. They are not commercial scale. The rest of the solar that is mandated by the state by 2020, so 33% of all electricity by 2020, needs to come from a renewable source. The remainder of that percentage has to come from commercial scale. So it would be fabulous if we could put it all on our rooftops and have it work for everybody in the state, but that's not the way the law is currently written. Let's see if there's any other that I'm seeing.
I had questions about the secondary-treated water. They said that they were-- who was it? It was Dolly-- Dolly Caravan--
Mm-hmm.
Said that she was concerned about the water that would be used on a project that would seep into their well water and contaminate it. I was wondering if Antelope Bakers is on sewer or septic tanks?
They are sewer, not in sewer. They are on septic and groundwater wells.
So did you say that the outfall from the septic tanks is cleaner or dirtier than the water they've used from--
I'm not even going to guess. I honestly don't know. I can tell you that tertiary-treated water is used for groundwater recharge, where they put it in basins, or they reinject it into wells to beef up the groundwater supply.
Could you explain how a septic system and leach line works?
Brian?
Well, gosh, I think I'm going back to visiting my relatives in Texas when I was little. Basically, what you do is you send the water out through a series of pipes with holes in it. It disperses out into the ground. That wastewater travels through a layer of soil, and the organisms in the soil essentially clean it. And then ultimately, assuming that you have enough liquid, you eventually may hit the water table with that cleaned water, if in fact the water table's high enough and the permeability of the soil allows it to go down that far.
That's not too bad. You forgot about the pretreatment and the septic tank.
Yeah, but I'm not an expert on it. But essentially, septic tanks return the ground, or the water, to the ground.
Yep, they do.
The septic systems in Antelope Bakers would probably return much more water to the ground than Silverado?
There's no way of-- I don't have the statistics on that. I would say that if they are using an acre-foot or so a year to clean panels, which would be the likely use for it, any of that water that spills on the ground is highly unlikely to reach the groundwater table. There is just not enough of it to reach it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yes, I actually did have a question. It seems to be a common theme tonight. Both Ms. Hartman, Mrs. Hartman, and I believe Ms. Shaughnessy also mentioned that they thought that the water was contaminated, the groundwater. Do we know, you know, if the water table has been compromised? I mean, I would think that we've already looked at that, and that answers no, but I think it warrants asking at least.
I don't know what the readings are on the existing groundwater table. I'm assuming that people who are pulling from private wells have that checked periodically, and I'm certain that they have their own disinfecting systems for assuring that water they pull from the ground meets a certain standard.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Yeah, one additional comment. This issue was brought up of cadmium telluride and certain types of solar panels. The best evidence that we have been able to find in regards to that actually comes from the U.S. Department of Energy's Brookhaven National Laboratory. And at least to this point, their studies have indicated that it does not present, in their view, any risks to the health and the environment. Recycling the modules at the end of their useful life resolves any environmental concerns. Further, the statement from the laboratory, and once again, I'm quoting from them, was that by displacing fossil fuels, they offer great environmental benefits. And the PV modules using cadmium telluride appear to be more environmentally friendly than the current uses of cadmium, which is largely batteries, rechargeable batteries that are used for cell phones and things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Ludick.
One more question on-- Susan Zanter said that other projects had the environmental impact report. I was wondering if you could explain what mitigated negative declaration versus environmental impact report, and why the site didn't have to have it?
A mitigated negative-- There's three levels of environmental review under CEQA. The lowest level of environmental review is an exemption, and those are categories of projects that the state has determined do not have a significant impact and thereby are exempt from CEQA. And which of those-- Sometimes you see them, but generally you don't see those types of projects. The next level of review is an initial study, and that can be used two ways. That can be used to clear a project, or that can be used to screen a project to determine whether or not the project needs an environmental impact report, or to kind of weed out issues that don't necessarily reach a level of significance. So you screen out what gets moved to that environmental impact report. An environmental impact report is done when you have a significant project-- sorry, a significant impact on a resource that cannot be mitigated. So what you see here is a mitigated negdech, which is an initial study that said there were some issues that could be potentially significant, but with the incorporation of mitigation measures, those impacts are less than significant, and therefore an EIR is not warranted. You would do an EIR if you have projects that are of the scale, size, or type that resulted in significant impacts. So case in point, we have a future project coming down the pike that is much larger than what you're seeing here, and that one is being required to have an EIR.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Go ahead and proceed with your review of the--
I'm done with my list of issues, so if you have more I've missed, please let me know.
There were comments relative to the impacts of fencing. Nearly as long as this city has been a city, there have been requirements to screen projects--
Correct.
--whether they are residential, commercial, or industrial.
Correct.
So, in my 40-some years of living in this community, there appears to me to be substantial number of wire and chain link and barbed wire-type fencing in the rural areas, Antelope Bakers being one of them. In my field visits over the last few weeks, there's quite a few, quite a few very similar to what is proposed and was conditioned in this project. Is that be correct?
I would agree with you.
Okay. So, chain link fencing with-- Someone talking out there? Thank you. Chain link fencing appears to me to be an appropriate condition, both for public safety as well as preventing folks from potentially vandalizing something. Matter of fact, I think we've had a couple of projects here right in the metropolitan downtown area where we've required--
Tubular steel.
Tubular steel fencing, I think, didn't we?
Correct.
Yeah, instead of chain link fencing, so. You didn't comment on the existence-- the current conditions in the field of the Edison distribution system and the impacts of these proposed lines, whether they're tying into the existing system or they're installing Gentai lines, right? So could you share that perspective with us?
I would say the western half of the Antelope Valley is attractive to solar developers because there are the high-voltage transmission lines that currently crisscross the Antelope Valley. You have the Tehachapi Renewable Line that runs through part of the western half of the Antelope Valley, plus you have the Barron Ridge Transmission Line, which LEDWP, is currently going through the process, and it's either just about to be approved or has been approved. And that will also run through the western half of the Antelope Valley. So solar projects are looking for locations where they can tie into that distribution system. This particular project would run a Gentai line down Avenue J in the city's right-of-way and tie into the Antelope Substation, which is located 95th, 94th-ish, and Avenue J. The number of-- I mean, the transmission-- the high-voltage transmission lines are everywhere. You have, in many instances, along Avenue J, Avenue I, Avenue H, even into Antelope Bakers, the local distribution lines, so those smaller 12-kilovolt distribution lines that run through the area are above ground. So this is not introducing something that does not already exist.
Okay. And that leads me to the next question. One of the speakers indicated that, if I heard them correctly, that this technology is too new to evaluate. Did I hear that right?
Mm-hmm.
Care to comment on that? The photovoltaic system?
I think that was probably directed at one of the specific types of photovoltaic systems, the one that I indicated before, the thin film cadmium-- cadmium, I can't pronounce words very well-- telluride, which, you know, arguably has some toxic material in it. But as I indicated, the best research that we've found to date indicates that there is not a recognized environmental hazard from it at this point.
And you've shared that literature with us--
Yes.
--in advance of the meeting, and thank you for doing that.
And that's the result of study from the Brookhaven National Laboratory under the U.S. Department of Energy.
What have we missed of environmental significance that is before us this evening?
I think it's important, Mr. Chairman, and you sort of alluded to this. There were a number of comments made regarding placement near school and impacts on school. This particular project that is open right now is not next to a school. In fact, it is nowhere near Delsor School. It's at 110th West and Avenue J, as far as its site. And I think, whereas those comments, you know, are certainly relevant to later cases, I want to make sure that, you know, the commission is clear that what we're talking about is this 40-acre site at that corner.
Maybe I missed it. Did you address the comment on the potential impact of this and other projects addressing
Yes, cumulative impacts are a part of what CEQA requires you to look at. But I would caution you that in this particular-- when you're looking at this kind of project, a number of the things that you typically find as cumulative effects are not quite the same way. For example, if this site were to be looked at as a development of single-family residences or a commercial center of some kind, that would have not only effects as part of the construction, but it would have long-lasting effects that are part of the operation of the project: traffic, noise, air quality from those vehicles, and things of that type. When you start looking at cumulative effects in the sense of a project like this that doesn't create, once it's operational, really increased vehicle movement, does not impact schools, does not really impact public facilities, or things of that type that projects that draw people do, you have to look at what are the actual effects of that project in relation to other things that are going around. The biggest thing that we've taken a look at is air quality impacts which happen during construction. Obviously, during construction, there are effects that happen from that, and we've looked at what the modeling is from the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District. Arguably, if you had all of these projects built at exactly the same time, you may be able to make the argument that there's a cumulative effect, but they are not likely to do that. They are going to operate on their own schedule. There was another issue brought up about aesthetics, or view shed, or things of that type, and Jocelyn is probably better at highlighting this, but there are certain kinds of aesthetic effects that are considered impacts under CEQA. effects that are considered impacts under CEQA and those that are not, and she may be able to highlight that a little better for you.
Before we jump to that, let's talk about the potential, rare as it may be, that a number of projects of this type would be constructed at the same time, therefore potentially triggering a, either a focused environmental impact report or a much broader environmental impact report. Would it be fair to say that, given the hundreds of tract map approvals that this commission has seen over the years, there certainly was never an assumption that those would all be built at the same time, nor were they ever? So is there a similarity here?
I think one of the difficulties when you start looking at these kinds of projects is the steps that they have to go through that are outside of what I would call the land use planning purview, and perhaps the applicant would be in better position. But they not only need an approval from the land use authority, in this case, the city, but they have to have a power purchase agreement in place before they're going to move forward. They have to have a, an engineering study that allows them to tie into the generation system. All of these requirements act, for lack of a better term, as kind of a break on these projects happening all at the same time. They have different kinds of queues that they're sitting in as far as allowance for when they can enter the system. They have to meet all of those requirements and reach those agreements with Edison or whoever the entity is that they're selling power to. And the, just the process of that happening tends to inhibit a lot of them occurring at the same time. I'll give you a good example. The city has already approved a number of projects out on the west side. To date, there is one under construction, and that happens to be the project that's at 97th, I think, and Avenue I are right in there.
We're at 97th and 100th.
Yeah, and if you'll recall, that was originally Tussow's, at Tussow Energy's project that was approved over two years ago through the CUP process. It's taken them this long to get to that point, and they still have issues that they're trying to deal with just in, nobody from Edison is here, I guess, just through Edison's rather Byzantine process to connect into the system.
So, I guess my analogy then would be similar in a development process, that you investigate a potential location, you get it under some form of control or contract, you go through the regulatory approval process with your local jurisdiction, you figure out how you're going to finance the project, get through all the agency permitting processes, and assuming market conditions are satisfactory, you move ahead with the project. So that's not at all different from a residential, or a commercial, or industrial project that we have seen. In fact, one might view this type of a project as less intrusive on the community environment as a whole than a 40-acre commercial development, or a 40-acre single-family residential development, or a large industrial operation employing hundreds or thousands of people. Did I miss something here in my analysis, or am I off-base? I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand if there's much of a difference.
Well, I guess the difference would be that in these kinds of projects, you do not have the need for the same type of public facilities and utility support systems, and, you know, anyone who's been around construction projects, or, I mean, we've had nights here where we've had residents next to residential construction projects who have had a lot to say about the grading, the trenching, the disruption to roadways, and things that are usually caused by trying to build the utility systems or other things that are necessary to serve the project. In this particular case, the major off-site work, if you will, happens to be the generation tie line that takes the power to the point of connection into the system. Most everything else is really a matter of what happens on the project site itself and the traffic that's generated during that construction phase. If I'm making any sense with that.
Makes sense to me. The visual impacts, I guess, would be the last thing you've mentioned, and I'm using my terminology, not the correct terminology, I'm sure.
Under visual impacts or impacts to views, private views are not protected. So one property owner has the right to develop their property to the standard allowed by the zoning ordinance, just like the Nag Marine property does. So if you owned a house, and your neighbor decided to build a house, and he wanted to build a house, he has the right to build that house to 35 feet, which is the maximum height of a single-family home in the rural residential zone. If that blocks your view of the mountains, or the poppy field, or any of those things, that view is not protected. What is protected are the views you have from public areas. So as you're driving down a roadway, and you can see the views to the north of the mountains, that view is protected. So an impact to that view, it is a protected, a protected view where you would consider the impacts of. These projects are relatively low-scale, so driving down the roadway, it's not going to affect your ability to see the surrounding mountain ranges. You may not like what's right next to the project site, but it's not, or right next to the roadway, but it is not impacting your ability to appreciate the view, which is what the area was known for. So on 90th Street West, which is not a state scenic highway...
We're talking about a project at 110th.
Then I'll stop.
Yeah, and, Mr. Chairman, once again to reiterate, we're speaking from the California Environmental Quality Act perspective here.
I understand. All right then. I did overlook the opportunity of the applicant to respond if they choose. Do you care to respond?
I think everything's been addressed.
You do not? All right then, thank you. All right then. So, is staff completed with their comments and responses? One thing for the city engineer, there's a condition in here relative to the impacts of roadways.
Mm-hmm.
And I raised this question in a staff meeting recently, and for the public's benefit, could you explain how it works and what these conditions mean to the community?
I assume you're referring to the condition where the applicant has to bring the condition of the roadway back to what it was before they started the construction?
Right, and that's the city roadways.
Correct.
And so if you just kind of give us the picture of the impact, I mean, this is multi-jurisdictional roadways here, right? Some are the city and some are the county.
Yes, there is that potential in this area. And so the condition was written to address the impacts that construction traffic could have on the roadway. And so we weren't looking for them to improve it beyond what the existing condition was, but if the construction traffic creates a large amount of potholes, or more structural damage to the roadway section, then they will have to bring it back to the condition that it was prior to them starting those activities. So we're going to have our inspectors inspect the roadway before, probably take some pictures and things, and also work in the pre-construction meeting that they would have on the project, come to some type of agreement of the condition of the roadway, and then after the fact, they'll inspect it again, and the applicant will be required to make any improvements that their construction could have.
Okay, I understand it. The only project that's similar to this, and it's a larger-scale project, is on Avenue I between 97th and 100th West, right? And so what would your sense of the roadway impacts be at this point in time? They're, what, 25%, 30% along, maybe more?
No, they only started within like the last two or three weeks. They actually pulled their permits in August. So I know part of the time they were training staff, and they have started construction. I was out there today. All of the potholes on Avenue I have been filled in as of this afternoon. I'm not sure who did them.
Within our jurisdiction?
No, I drove from 110th all the way into town on Avenue I, and I didn't encounter a single pothole. So I'm not sure who went and filled them, and you could see, I mean, obviously a difference in pavement. So I don't, I don't know...
It was since last Monday, because some of them weren't filled.
Well, I was out there last week, and there were some pretty impressive ones. But as of today, there weren't any potholes, and you could see fresh asphalt. So I don't know who was out working.
Seems like it's working, though. It seems like the condition that, it's the same condition on that project as proposed on this, right? It's the same improvement condition for the roadways on the projects before us tonight as the project that's under construction, the same standard condition? No difference?
Correct.
All right, thank you. All right then. Any other members of the commission care to offer any questions, comments, before we close the public hearing? No other speakers? Anyone? All right then. Without objection, we'll close the public hearing, and it would be appropriate to consider a motion on this matter.
I move that we adopt resolution number 12-14, approving conditional use permit number 11-07.
I second that.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Please vote. You want to recycle it, please, Joy?
Do we want to retake that?
Yeah, could we, please? Let's try it again.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. All right then. The next item is, is a new public hearing on conditional use permit 12-14. This is the Antelope Valley North Side Four Square Church. And for the record, we've received a uncontested letter signed by Tim J. Lee of the church. So, do we have any speakers on this one?
The only speaker's card I have on this item, Mr. Chairman, is from the applicant.
All right then. The applicant certainly can offer his testimony if he wishes.
Can I, can I wait? I wasn't aware that I...
Certainly, certainly. I'm not sure the man's name, so would you read it into the record?
Tim Lee.
Mr. Lee, all right, thank you. And you don't care to offer any comment? That's fine. We have no other speakers on this matter?
No other cards on this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right then, it's appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion.
I move that we adopt a resolution number 12-24, approving conditional use permit number 12-14.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Further comment or question? Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item number five. All right, this is item number five, which is conditional use permit 12-11, which is an applicant, Sunlight Partners, for a 20-acre PV project, and the public hearing is open on this matter. Do we have speakers on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right then, could we have a staff report, please?
Chairman, both commissioners, what you have before you is a construction of a 1.5-megawatt solar photovoltaic, photovoltaic solar electric generating facility in the RR 2.5 zone. The applicant, Sunlight Partners, is requesting a conditional use permit for the construction and operation of this facility. The proposed project consists of ROSA PV panels on single-access trackers that would generate 1.5 megawatts of electricity. The project site is vacant and is zoned RR 2.5. The proposed project would operate year-round, producing a total of 1.5 megawatts of renewable electric power during daytime hours. Power generated by the proposed project would be sold to Southern California Edison. The proposed project consists of ROSA photovoltaic panels mounted on single-access trackers. These photovoltaic panels would convert sunlight directly into electrical energy without the use of heat transfer fluid or cooling water. Three inverters/electrical equipment pads would be located in the central portion of the project site. The proposed project would tie into the Southern California Edison distribution network via the 12-kilovolt distribution line located adjacent to the project site on 80th Street West. A chain link fence would surround the project site, and a 10-foot landscaped area would be provided between the fence and the property line to screen the development from the surrounding uses. Access to the project site would be provided via a gate on 80th Street West. 80th Street West would be dedicated at 50 feet from centerline. Irrevocable offers of dedication would be provided for 82nd Street West, Avenue H10, and Avenue H12 at 32 feet from centerline. The proposed project has the potential to impact views from Avenue I and 80th Street West and nearby residences. The photovoltaic panels would be approximately eight feet high when in full tilt. While the views of the project site would change, the development would not impede long-range views. Additionally, the project site would be fenced and landscaped around the entire perimeter. The proposed project would generate environmental impacts during construction with respect to biological resources, geology, and soils, and noise. The construction of the proposed project has the potential to impact burrowing owls during vegetation removal and grading operations. No burrowing owls were found on the project site during the site surveys. However, pre-construction burrowing owl surveys are required prior to the issuance of any permits. The applicant is required to prepare and implement a dust control plan in accordance with AVA-QMD Rule 403, which would ensure that impacts from dust during construction are minimal. 80th Street West would remain in its current unimproved condition. The applicant is required to address all dust complaints that arise from the proposed project and the use of 80th Street West. If satisfactory resolution is not provided by the applicant, then coming to the city to deal with the inspectors would be an appropriate solution. Construction of the proposed project would generate noise, which has the potential to impact surrounding land uses, including the residence just south of the project site on the north side of Avenue I, and the single-family residence slash ranching operation located approximately a quarter mile southwest of the project site. Mitigation measures are required, which would reduce noise impacts to a less-than-significant level. Minimal amounts of noise would be generated by the operation of the proposed project, and only during routine maintenance, as the panels and tracking system would be silent. Routine cleaning of the panels and landscaping maintenance activities would occur three to four times a year, and would last approximately two to three days. Most of the time, the facility would be remotely operated, and no noise would be generated. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, there may be some. Before we hear from the public?
In the agenda review, we went over what was different about this project, why it was half the size, but it generated quite a bit less power. And would you explain the difference?
This is a crest project, and that's a program under Edison, and it limits the size of the fields to 1.5 megawatts. So technically, they could do, you know, a 3, or a 4.5, or a 6, but it has to be in 1.5-megawatt increments, and each of those 1.5-megawatt increments have their own meters, their own, it's its own distinct project. increments have their own meters, their own, it's its own distinct project.
Is that because of what Mr. Lukey was alluding to earlier, Byzantine requirements of?
No, it's just another different program for adopting solar projects.
Thank you.
Sometimes words come back at you, don't they?
Yeah, well, that wouldn't be the first time that words have come back at me, so.
Up to and including today. For the record, we received a letter from Sunlight Partners, signed by Mark Roberts, and it's somewhat contradictory on accepting the conditions. So is the applicant here? Please join us at the podium there. And you are Mr. Roberts?
Yes, I am Mr. Roberts. Good evening, Chairman.
You look a little bit like Henry Fonda, you know.
I actually haven't been told that before.
I'm curious, when you state, General Advisory Number One outlines a number of conditions which would not apply to this type of project. However, there appears to be other standard conditions which may not be applicable based upon the approval of the site. Does that mean you're not accepting our standard conditions?
No.
It means you are accepting--
I'm accepting, yes.
Dandy, that's what we'd like to hear, thank you.
You bet.
You can go ahead and make your other statements if you wish, thank you.
Yeah, I know, time's late, so I won't, I'll try and make it brief. But anyway, good evening, commissioners and chairman and vice chairman. Let me just touch on a few things. And since it was sort of a lead-in here on crest, we are what are called distribution level projects. So while we're not rooftop, we are distribution level, which means in order to be distribution level under this program, you have to be 1.5 megawatts or under. And we're taking up a larger footprint for that 1.5 megawatt simply because we're employing tracking. And in order to employ tracking, you need to spread your, we engineer our sites such that we have no shading impact for tracking. If you squeeze those panels too close together, you're going to get shading impact and it's going to reduce your power output. Whereas I believe, the other project, I believe, might be a fixed tilt where you can, where you can put those in much closer and there's no shading impact or not near the kind of shading impact. You know, the other thing I do want to point out is that there is, there is a very significant thinning out process that has been going on, that's continuing to go on with these solar projects. We're a party to that thinning out process, as well as most developers. Your neighbor to the north, the county to the north, has gone through a very significant thinning out process where a significant majority of the projects that are proposed, many of which have already gone through the CUP process, are now longer viable projects simply because they couldn't get through all the hurdles with the interconnection agreements, the PPAs and the CUPs. There is limited capacity on the lines. For us in particular, since we are only connecting to the distribution lines, there has to be capacity on the circuit and at the substation. If that capacity is not there, we cannot move forward with these projects. So there's, this cannot, I think as alluded to earlier, this will not and cannot continue. It will not mushroom. There is a self-limiting factor here in terms of how many of these projects can and will go forward. I do, I do want to also, just, it hasn't been mentioned, I haven't heard it, but I want to make everyone aware that there is a biological mitigation fee that's collected at $770 per acre. And so all of these projects are paying that mitigation fee and that does come into the city for the city's use. And so I do want to make people aware of that. Our, you know, we're working with a local landowner. So this is a landowner that is obviously, most of our, we love to work with local landowners. And obviously, a landowner should have a right to choose what they would like to do with their land. I do also want to make you aware that we have reached out to the landowners that are directly affected by this project. We did send them letters, we included cards for correspondence. We did receive an email from the landowner to the south, directly to the south of our project, I believe that's the Oliver residence. And we have tried to reconnect through emails. We don't have their phone number, but we've made it very apparent that we would like to connect with them. And I don't know if they're here tonight, I don't know if there's a speaker card there, but maybe we'll hear from them later. And the only other thing I think I'd heard tonight that I'd like to come on, comment on, is this issue of cumulative impact. And I think it's important that, that you can have, cumulative impact needs to also be looked at from the standpoint of those impacts that don't get mitigated. So, I mean, CEQA, CEQA will not, will not, if there are mitigations, even for these large 4,000 acre projects, they have to go find land to mitigate that 4,000 acres. That's, that's a net zero cumulative effect for that, for that issue. And so, to the extent that there are mitigations, there are mitigations in our project, there's mitigations in every project that comes through, whether it's an EIR or initial study. Anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, appreciate your comments. Any questions? Alright, do we have speakers then, please?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
Yes, we do.
Go ahead.
James Oliver.
Mr. Oliver, you're welcome.
I'm the house right there next where it says north, so when you say there isn't no houses, I'm there. I've lived here 51 years. I purchased the property because it was zoned A1. I didn't even know it was residential or that high density. And I just, I don't have nothing against solar, I don't have nothing against septic or sewage treatment, but we don't scatter them all over. We put them in one place, like I believe it's Avenue D and 14 Freeway. I don't know why these guys, excuse me, want to go everywhere with them. Why not just find one big, large piece of property where everybody's happy instead of imposing on all these people? I just don't understand. And she said that there'd be a fence to cover it if there are 14 high panel, that's a high fence. And the only other fence I know like that is like Mar-a-Loma Prison. So that just, I don't, I don't understand that. I think this will kill growth. The people that are grow, are out in that area want the rural, you know, quiet area, they don't want the solar panels right next to them and stuff, so. And that's about it.
Thank you for your comments. You have another speaker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Dawn Dykhouse.
Again, my name is Dawn Dykhouse. I'm sure there's no need for me to read the exact same comment I made earlier, but I would like to point out a couple of other things. First of all, the one I think I was most disturbed by as far as concerning the vote on the previous solar project, septic tanks? The houses do not have pipes that go right into the groundwater. These are going into a tank, which has been pumped out by a company and then taken to a treatment facility. Our septic does not go right back into our groundwater. So I think that was sort of a misleading comment. I noticed a lot of head shaking back there where I'm sitting.
Actually, the effluent, the solids go into the tank and the effluent does flow into the ground. So you go right ahead.
And I do know that, I'm sorry, I was making a few notes and some of them, I guess save for the one that's referring to the, closer to the school, but they're not taking into account the fact that this might, they spoke earlier about, oh, it'll, this project will be finished and then another project will be started, so you won't have all the dirt at the same time. Well, that's sort of, kind of what we are saying. You have one starts, goes for a couple of years, another one starts, goes for a couple of years. We're going to have to live with this solar for years and years to come. This is not a short-term project. So I think I'll just save the rest of my comments for the next one, thank you.
Thank you for your comments again. Pardon?
Danan Shaughnessy.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm going to keep this one really short because you guys all heard before as well. Still standing very strongly. If I could just simply point out, I see two other projects that already have a CPU or a CUP that already stated approved on their dates. And if you can notice how close the next one comes and the fact that there's more to come, if you guys could just kind of take that--
Yeah, those projects were approved in the last three years.
Yeah, February and September of just last year. So just as we walk forward, there's just more coming and more coming and more coming and our concern still stands, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Another speaker?
Dolly Cannavan.
Ms. Cannavan, welcome back.
Thank you. I would just like to comment that with all of these solars that are going in, none of us have been notified. I'm just finding out all of this. I didn't realize that all of these solars were coming in. The only people they're notifying is, like I say, I think it was 150 feet from--
No, it's 1,500 feet.
Okay, but, you know, I'm left on the other side and I was never notified, I'm just now finding out about all of this.
Alright, thank you.
Robert Kerikas.
Welcome back, sir.
On accumulated impacts, you guys are talking like you're talking in the city, like we're living in the city. We're not, we're living in the country. And accumulated impacts are going to affect wildlife ability to move around, corridors and stuff like that. And you're not thinking about that. Now, lighting and glare, I was just over at Tatuso's project yesterday and toward the evening, and there was tremendous glare coming off of the structures in that particular project that just started. Also, I noticed that wildlife where, that used to live, where they're project, where they're working, has moved off of that area and is now concentrated in other areas, wondering where in the world they are. I have seen one thing on here that I'm kind of happy about. Let me see, page seventeen. And that is that they said the project site would be fenced and screened with trees, landscaping around the entire perimeter of the project site. And this is the first one I've seen that says this. And I'm very happy to see that. And I'm glad that they've included that in this.
Actually, all our projects have that condition.
Really? I haven't heard that from Silverano, they haven't been talking about it at all.
They do.
Oh, then the lighting. Every one of these projects is going to have lighting at night. And you're telling me that when, we're looking at 90th to 110th, G to H is going to be almost entirely filled with individual projects eventually. Every one of them's going to have night lighting all around the perimeter. So we're going to have a lot of night lighting in the acres, far more than we have now. And that's got to have an effect. And as there's more and more of that lighting, it has to have an accumulate effect. This is not the city. I moved out of New York City to get away from lighting. And then, of course, there's been just one day where they've checked what the biological survey is. I don't think that's enough time.
We're being very generous with your time because the clock didn't start, so.
Oh, I like this time, it's very nice.
Pretty good, isn't it?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm actually done, thank you.
Alright, thank you for your comments.
Those are all the cards, Mr. Chairman, for this item.
Alright then, thank you. We'll leave the public hearing open and ask the applicant if they care to rebut.
Just a few quick comments. We don't anticipate having any lighting, except for maybe gate lighting, at least currently. And obviously, if we do, it will be night compliant. Our construction, the lady that was talking about construction timeline and years, just so we keep this in perspective, our timeline to build this plant is six weeks. So it's an extremely short time to get a plant like this up and going. And we would love, we would love to put all of this solar in one spot, it's just not feasible. As we talked about, it's distributed generation, we have to go where there's capacity on the distribution lines. And, you know, we may, we may only get one in 10 projects that we're trying to get through successful because there's no capacity. So we go where, we go where SCE allows us to go, so.
And the land configuration and willing property owners have a little to do with it as well, don't they?
Yeah, absolutely, right? You've got to get property owners that are willing and want to partner with you and then after you pass that hurdle, you've got to get SCE to tell you that there's capacity on their distribution lines and their circuits and their substation. And so we, you know, we invest a lot of money to try to get to that one project that actually can make it through, yeah.
Some folks would look at this, this site as relatively flat and there is an elevation change from south to the north. What, one and a half, two percent grade, maybe?
Yes, right.
So what's your intent on the grading on this site? Do you look at mass grading on this or do you expect to keep it in pretty much its current condition?
Yeah, in fact, yeah, we're trying to do as little, you know, we want to have low-impact development, absolutely. In fact, we had originally had our entrance not coming off of Eightieth Street, but coming off around the corner where we would have had to actually do some, some cut and fill and some significant grading to bring those two elevations together. And we've actually moved it now to limit the amount of grading. So, yeah, to the extent that we can limit grading, we will. We're only doing grading where we have to.
Alright, anyone else have questions? Go ahead.
Jocelyn, can you please explain the process for notification and response?
All projects in the city, when they go to public hearing, a public hearing notice is sent out. If it's in the urban residential zones, commercial and industrial, it's a 500-foot notification. In the rural residential zones, it's a 1,500-foot notification and that goes to all property owners and that's standard. The state law says 300 feet.
So that's the, that's the requirement under the law. However--
That is correct.
--the city also posts on the city website?
We post it on the city website, we advertise it in the paper and we post signs on the project sites. And actually, I'd like to add, I actually maintain a separate solar list for anybody who is interested, so all you need to do is contact me, I will add you to the distribution list and you'll receive all notices.
Alright. And just, I've raised this issue before, on your page 29 of your initial study, you call out the school districts. It's Antelope Valley Joint Union High School District and Westside Union School District. They get very sensitive about their name.
That is correct, but CEQA looks at it a slightly different perspective. They're looking at impacts to school with increased student population requiring the construction of an additional school.
Right.
That's the standard for impacts to school and the state has determined by statute that payment of school mitigation fees makes that impact go away.
And there might be a well on this site?
I don't believe so. There might be, but I, as far as any of the reports came back, no, there's no well.
Yeah, it may be adjacent to it then. Okay. So, the folks talked about the cumulative impacts. They spoke about glare and wildlife, however, there were, there were no specific references to any protected species or, any species for that matter. for that matter. And then, the height of the panels in relationship to the fencing and screening.
In this particular case, the panels will not exceed eight feet, and that would be when they're in a full-tilt position. And so, the height of the panels will not be higher than the height of the fence.
And just to be clear, the landscaping is around the entire site, right?
That is correct. The intent is to completely screen the fence and the site.
On page 27 of the initial study at the bottom, number four, it says, "On-site, construction supervisors shall have the responsibility and authority to receive and resolve noise complaints. A clear appeal process to the owner shall be established prior to construction commencement and will allow for resolution of noise problems that cannot be resolved by the site supervisor." I was wondering if maybe we could help Mr. Oliver, since he's going to be the one closest to it, understand that process.
There has to be a sign posted on how noise complaints get resolved on the site, with a phone number and the ability for the person making the noise complaint to directly contact the person running the construction, and an appeal process to the developer, in this case, it would be Mark Roberts or his appointed designee, who can deal with a noise complaint if the site supervisor cannot. The residents always have the right to come to the city and talk to the inspectors if they cannot get resolution through the project developer.
Thank you.
All right, anything further from anyone? All right, then, it would... No further speakers, right?
No other cards on this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. So, it would be appropriate, then, to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on this matter.
I'd like to move that we adopt resolution number 1218, approving conditional use permit number 1211.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further question, comment? Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. We're going to take an eight-minute break, and we'll be back at 8:00. All right, folks, if you'd like, take your seats, please. We'll be back in session in just a moment. All right, then, we're back in session, and we're now on item six, which is actually five separate actions. The commission will take up the hearing on this as one hearing. So, folks that have comments either on the development agreement, general plan amendment, zone change, or the conditional use permits would address their comments in their three-minute time as one item. Any objections to doing it that way from any of the members? All right, then. That's the way we'll do it. So, this matter is open conditional, or excuse me, development agreement 89-01, general plan amendment 12-02, zone change number 12-02, and conditional use permits number 12-08 and conditional use permit 12-09. The public hearing is open. And we have speaker's cards on this, a number of them.
Yes.
So, could we have the staff report, please? And just before you do, just so folks understand what the commission has considered before this meeting tonight, which I didn't explain at the beginning of the meeting. The commission meets one week in advance of this Monday night meeting. As a public meeting, it's open for the public. It's a staff briefing, and we spend whatever time it takes to hear staff's analysis of a project, ask our questions, but we do not deliberate. We do not make decisions, nor do we interact in that capacity like we do here. During the process, before the hearing tonight, we have received correspondence, some 850 pages of correspondence. That was, some people call it a paper dump, but it was provided to us in this form as well as in a CD. That was provided to the commission last Thursday. We also received some 160 pages of correspondence in advance of this meeting. We also received comments from Silverado, about a 13-page. We received staff reports in addition to what is in our agenda, plus another 21 pages. And we've received comments from folks here tonight who have read their comments into the record. We've also received communications from the Westside Union School District, from their superintendent, and some history there, as well as the others that we had mentioned. We also have received a letter from Mr. Rika, who is a property owner on a portion of one of these projects. It's actually, I believe, the gentleman who is currently farming the alfalfa, 70-some acres of alfalfa, just off Gian 95th. At any rate, the point I'm making or attempting to make is that the commission and its members have received and reviewed a considerable amount of information. I, myself, have read every page. Others may have, others may not have. The point is, is that we have had a considerable amount of exposure to this project well in advance of this meeting and have had an opportunity to visit the sites and review the paper, as well as the CDs. I would certainly thank the folks that have provided that information to us, the residents, property owners, advocates, and those in opposition, and we appreciate it. Thank you. So, could we have a staff report on this item, please?
Yes, and I'm going to apologize in advance, it's going to be quite long. What you have, Chairman Voss and Commissioners, what you have before you tonight are two solar facilities which would occupy a total of 293 gross acres on two separate sites. Involved in the request is a request to rescind the development agreement, change the general plan land use designation, rezone most of the subject properties, construct a 20-megawatts photovoltaic solar generating facility, and construction of a 40-megawatts photovoltaic solar facility. The applicant, Silverado Power, is requesting two conditional use permits for the construction and operation of PV solar electric generating facilities in a rural residential zone. The proposed projects consist of rows of PV panels which would be either fixed or on trackers. These panels would generate 20-megawatts of electricity on Site 1 and 40-megawatts of electricity on Site 2. The southern half of Site 1 and all of Site 2 were part of the Del Sur Ranch project that was originally approved by the City of Lancaster in February of 1990 and covered by development agreement number 8901, which became effective on April 17, 1990. This development agreement established certain timeframes and requirements for the development of the project and has been amended several times to incorporate changes of the project description, general plan designation, zoning, and the subdivision map. The subject properties were ultimately sold to another developer for the construction of 696 single-family residents under tentative tract map 46250. The underlying general plan designation and zoning on the subject properties does not allow for the development of solar generating facilities. The development agreement on the subject properties does not expire until October 18, 2012. However, while the development agreement is in effect, the general plan and zoning designations cannot be changed. Therefore, the property owner has submitted a letter to the city requesting that the development agreement be rescinded on the subject properties. As previously stated, the general plan land use designations and zoning for most of the project sites do not allow for the development of commercial solar facilities. Additionally, the project sites are currently approved for the development of 696 single-family residential lots, which is not consistent with the goals and policies of the city's general plan with respect to alternative energy. The approved residential subdivision is designated as an urban residential area but is generally surrounded by non-urban residential agricultural uses and... and not in proximity to goods and services that are necessary for urban developments, as such as not consistent with Policy three-point-six-point-one, which promotes the reduction of energy consumption by establishing land use patterns which would decrease automobile travel. A total of two-hundred-and-sixteen gross acres of the two-hundred-and-ninety-three gross acres would need to have the general plan land use designation and zoning changed in order to allow for the development of the commercial solar facilities, the fifty-eight acres at Site One, which is the pork chop-looking piece that kind of surrounds Del Sur School, and a hundred-and-fifty acres at Site Two. Therefore, the amendment of the general plan land use designation to NU, non-urban residential, and rezoning of the project sites to rural residential two-point-five is necessary to allow the proposed projects to move forward. The proposed project at Site One would operate year-round, producing a total of twenty megawatts of renewable electric power during daytime hours. Power proposed by the proposed project would be sold to Southern California Edison. The proposed project consists of rows of photovoltaic panels. These panels would either be fixed or mounted on trackers and would convert sunlight directly into electrical energy without the use of heat transfer fluid or cooling water. A substation would be located near the entry gate along Ninetieth Street West and would feed the electricity to the Del Sur Substation located on the southeast corner of Avenue H and Ninetieth Street West via Gentile Line. A chain-link fence would surround the project site, and a ten-foot landscaped area would be provided between the fence and the property line to screen the development from the surrounding uses. Access to the project site would be provided via a gate on Ninetieth Street West and a gate on Avenue G. These gates would be set back forty feet from the edge of right-of-way to allow vehicles to fully pull off the roadway when accessing the project site. Irrevocable offers of dedication would be provided for Avenue G, Avenue H, Avenue G eight, Ninetieth Street West, and Ninety-Fifth Street West. Avenue G, Avenue H, and Ninetieth West would be dedicated at fifty feet from centerline. Avenue G eight and Ninety-Fifth Street West would be dedicated at forty-two feet from centerline. And Ninety-third Street West would be dedicated at thirty-two feet from centerline. A master-planted drainage facility is proposed to run along Avenue G. This earthen channel is proposed to be ninety feet wide and seven feet deep. The applicant shall provide an irrevocable offer of dedication for this future facility. The proposed project has the potential to impact views from the surrounding roads and nearby residences and school. The photovoltaic panels would be approximately ten feet high with a maximum height of fourteen feet. The height of the panels is dependent on the specific technology chosen by the applicant. While the views of the project site would change, the development would not impede the long-range views of the mountain ranges. Additionally, the entire site would be fenced and landscaping would be provided between the fence and the property line. This landscaping would be drought-tolerant, is likely to be native, and would screen the development from view. Any existing trees or large shrubs along the property line would be incorporated into the project landscaping. An air quality analysis was conducted that demonstrated that construction emissions associated with the proposed project would not exceed the threshold established by the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District. The applicant would also be required to prepare and implement a dust control plan in accordance with AVA QMD Rule four-oh-three. Operation of the proposed project would result in minimal amounts of air emissions only during times of site maintenance. As a portion of the project site is currently under agricultural production, implementation of the proposed project would result in a net reduction of air emissions. The northern half of the project site contains an existing single-family residence, which is part of an active agricultural use. This house was constructed in nineteen thirty-nine and was subsequently modified. A cultural resources investigation was conducted on the property and included an evaluation of the residence. This evaluation concluded that the residence is not historically significant and no significant cultural impacts would occur as a result of its demolition. The construction of the proposed project would generate noise, which could potentially be heard off-site at the adjacent single-family residences in Del Sur Elementary. Mitigation measures are required, which would reduce the potential noise impacts to a less than significant level. Additionally, the applicant is working with the school district to coordinate schedules to minimize disruption at the school to the extent feasible. Minimal amounts of noise would be generated during routine maintenance of the panels and landscaping. However, during typical operation, no noise is expected as the panels and tracking systems are silent. Additional environmental impacts could be generated during construction of the proposed project with respect to biological resources and hazards and hazardous materials. The construction of the proposed project has the potential to impact burrowing owls and Swainson's hawk foraging during vegetation removal and grading operations. Mitigation measures have been identified, which require the applicant to conduct pre-construction surveys prior to the issuance of any permits. In the event that burrowing owls are occupying the site or Swainson's hawk are utilizing the site for foraging, the applicant shall coordinate with the Department of Fish and Game to determine appropriate procedures slash mitigation. Due to the age of the single-family residence, lead-based paint and asbestos may be present. Additionally, PCBs may be present in the transformer located on one of the power poles on the project site. These hazardous materials would be removed in accordance with all applicable rules and regulations. There are also irrigation wells located on the project site. If these water wells are not to be used during the operation of the proposed project, the applicant shall abandon or close the wells in accordance with applicable rules and regulations. The current alfalfa farm that comprises the northern half of Site One currently pumps five-hundred-and-four acre-feet of water a year. This would be, the proposed project would result in substantial reduction in the amount of groundwater utilized compared to the current uses. The proposed project at Site Two would also operate year-round, producing a total of forty megawatts of renewable power. Power generated by the proposed project would be sold to Edison and would consist of a similar description of rows of PV panels, which would be a maximum of fourteen feet in height, but are likely to be substantially smaller and would either be fixed or mounted on trackers. These inverters would be approximately ninety inches or seven-and-a-half feet in height. A substation would be located on the southeastern corner of the project site and would feed the electricity to the proposed Antelope Solar Greenwork Substation located at the northeast corner of future Lancaster Boulevard and Ninety-seventh Street West via Gentile Line. A chain-link fence would surround the project site, and ten feet of landscaping would be provided between the fence and the property line. A thirty-foot paved access road would be provided to the project site either from Avenue I via Hundredth Street West primary route or Ninetieth Street West via Avenue H alternate route. Access to the project site would be provided via a gate on Hundredth Street West. Avenue H and Hundredth Street West would be both dedicated at fifty feet from centerline. Irrevocable offers of dedication would be provided for Avenue H eight and Hundred and Fifth Street West at forty-two feet from centerline. The proposed project may have the potential to impact views from the distant land uses and roadways. No paved roadways exist in the vicinity of the project site. Avenue H and Hundredth Street West are dirt roads, but are not routinely used by vehicles. The closest paved roads are Avenue I approximately half a mile south of the project site and Hundred and Tenth Street West approximately half a mile west of the project site. For purposes of the air quality analysis, the route along Avenue H was assumed as a worst-case scenario because it provides, because it is longer than the route along Hundredth Street West. This roadway would be paved and operational prior to the start of construction on Site Two. This roadway, along with the preparation and implementation of a dust control plan in accordance with Rule four-oh-three, would ensure that impacts from dust during construction and operation of the site are minimal. Construction of the proposed project would generate noise, which could potentially be heard off-site. However, there are no sensitive receptors immediately adjacent to the project site. The closest sensitive receptors are a handful of single-family residences located approximately a quarter-mile to the east and southeast of the project site. These residences are buffered from the project site by a line of tamarisk trees and a solar development currently under construction. Additionally, mitigation measures are required, which would reduce potential noise impacts to a less than significant level. Additional environmental impacts could be generated during the construction of the project with respect to biological resources and hazards. The construction of the proposed project has the potential to impact burrowing owls and Swainson's hawk, and mitigation measures have been identified, which require the applicant to conduct pre-construction surveys prior to the issuance of permits. There may also be old irrigation wells on the project site. If these water wells are present and will not be utilized during the operation of the proposed project, the application shall close and abandon the wells in accordance with applicable rules and regulations. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Members have any questions before we hear the applicant? No? All right then, may we have the applicant, if you choose to offer something? And for the record, please state your name.
My name is Garrett Bean with Silverado Power.
Thank you.
Please. Good afternoon again. First of all, thank you for taking the time to review this application. I know a lot of things have come on your plate, and we've been scrambling to answer the questions as best as possible, as I'm sure you guys have been weeding through the information. We haven't received all the information, although it has been requested. But the information that we have received, we try to address as best as possible. But what I'd like to do right now is go through these two projects, kind of answer some of the questions and try and address some of the concerns that were raised earlier in response to the proposed developments. So, as you know, we've talked about Silverado Power before. There are questions about how long have we been around? Is that experience a detriment to the development of our projects? And we think, well, first of all, we've been around for approximately three years now. We've worked with these projects from the original origination phases, where we went out, sought out projects, land, worked with utilities. So, we've brought these projects through over three years of time to where they are right now. Yes, Silverado, as an entity, has not built a project yet. We understand that that can be a concern. However, our executives and our team has worked on over five-hundred megawatts of constructed projects. So we've brought those forward and through the development phase. So we're bringing that experience to the City of Lancaster. You know, we've talked about it before, but I wanted to kind of go back to it, that we are trying to be as responsible of a developer as possible. We make our best effort to locate projects where there are minimal impacts. We look for existing transmission lines. We were talking about distribution, or distributed generation projects, and these are that. What we're doing is we're tying into the existing power lines adjacent to the site, at least for summer solar. For springtime, we will be creating a small Gentile connecting into an existing line. So our focus is to locate those projects around existing capacity and plug-in. That's what makes these projects feasible. We have gone out, we have looked at multiple sites. We chose these sites based on that capacity and based on the biological, cultural, and geotechnical due diligence during the development cycle. So we've put a lot of time and effort into that. Technical studies have determined that there's no significant biological, cultural, or hazardous material issues at the site. These were conducted by professionals, some of which we have here today. And we have worked with the City of Lancaster to make sure that any potential impacts are mitigated to a less than significant level. The first project location, West Avenue H and Ninety-third Street, this is on approximately a hundred-and-thirty-five acres of land. We're looking to put about twenty megawatts on that, and that would generate enough power to supply over four thousand homes. The interconnection, as mentioned, will interconnect to existing distribution lines adjacent to the project site to the east and to the south. What we're looking at local impacts of this is approximately one hundred jobs are expected to be needed during peak construction, with numerous other positive impacts, economic impacts. Springtime solar is on H and Hundred and Fifth Street, adjacent to another existing project with recurrent energy that's currently under construction. Yes, oh, sorry. Springtime solar is located adjacent to an existing project with recurrent energy that's under construction. So there was capacity on the system. Both companies have identified it, and we've both worked with S E E to make sure that there's capacity on those lines to plug-in. Interconnection will connect through Silverado's central analog dry ranch, substation one mile south of the project site. This is connecting to an existing sixty-six KV line, so it's slightly higher than other ones, but we won't be needing to do major transmission upgrades. So this is a little bit larger than the distributed generation projects. From this project, we're looking at approximately a hundred-and-fifty jobs to be created during peak construction, and then as well as additional local economic impacts. Our project design includes vegetative screening, and we've gone over this before. It's in consistency with the provisions in the Conditional Use Permit, which we've read to and agreed to. We understand that there's multiple concerns, especially being nearby a school, one of them being dust control, issues of dust coming onto the school. One thing about Silverado's projects is we are utilizing specifically on this site fixed-tilt panels. This is a contracted site, so it's a real project, it will get built, if it is to be approved. So what we're looking at is fixed-tilt systems that don't require the excessive grading that some of the tracking systems do require. So a lot of, I think, the concerns of the community have been generated off of other projects throughout the Antelope Valley, requiring different technologies, requiring different standards for construction. So one thing that is important is that to differentiate between our projects and other projects, and that we have the privilege of learning from other projects and what's gone wrong and addressing those concerns. And members of our team are going out with groups from the Antelope Valley, from the AQMD, Dust Busters, other groups, to try and identify and tackle these problems. So we continue to work through that. The panels themselves, height, while we do allow our panels in the CUP to go up to fourteen feet, if you look at the technical specifications, we're expecting them to be six-and-a-half feet tall, so relatively low. But we, and early on in the process, we wanted to provide ourselves with some flexibility for the technology. While we haven't decided the exact type of panel, it's, I can say that it's probably not going to be CADTEL panels with Acadium. So if those are the primary concerns, we're most likely looking at photo-crystalline. But we have done extensive research, as the rest of the industry has, into the problems, or the perceived problems, should I say, of CADTEL panels. So we take it very seriously. We've researched it and will continue to look into all issues as we move forward. Noise, I think Jocelyn addressed it already. This is a silent system. We're not going to be creating significant noise beyond construction. But during construction, we are committed to reducing those noise with mitigation measures. And we're going to coordinate with the school and make sure that we do that to the best of our ability. I think lighting has been talked about a little bit. I know it's a concern of the community. All of the lighting, if you look through the initial study and the mitigation measures, is downward-facing and it's for security purposes. We're not shining lights into the sky. So that has been addressed. One of the other topics was, you know, the issue of being adjacent to the school. As you know, and you've seen correspondence, we have been working with the school. We've been talking to them for the past year, from the various principals to the superintendents. You know, Silverado has recognized this as an issue early on in one of our other proposed projects. While we have proposed a parking lot in the school, on the school grounds, to alleviate traffic concerns and safety hazards, we have not formalized an agreement with them. That is to be carried out. We did make an attempt over a month ago now to reach out and sit down with the school board. We're informed that we should not appear at that time, since the school has offered us to present at the next school board presentation, so they wanted to kind of feel it out, see what people in the community had to say. So we will be presenting tomorrow at the school board meeting. So, like I said before, we'll be working with the school as much as possible to mitigate any any potential construction impacts, make sure it's a safe development, make sure traffic is not an issue, noise is not an issue, and any other concerns that they may have. I'd go on to shortly discuss the economic impacts of the local community. Total for these two projects, we're looking at approximately 250 construction jobs, sustaining and growing local business opportunities. I think you heard at our last hearing that we've been working with companies like All Valley Surveying, who have been conducting work for us over the past year and have benefited greatly and are hiring new employees and adding to their business. So, it's a great thing for local business. Economic studies, third-party economic studies, indicate that these solar facilities will create over $40 million in both direct and indirect impacts. So, that's from wages to subcontracting with local businesses, to just healthcare and spending in the community. We understand that this is a concern in the community, so we've done our best to reach out to people of that community. We've met with Antelope Bakers multiple times within the past year. We've met with the school. We've met with neighbors. We're working with neighbors for the development of the project, and we'll continue to do so. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but really appreciate your time hearing this and digging through those materials.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Any more questions, anyone? Go ahead.
You mentioned the school board meeting tomorrow night. What is the purpose of that? That's just to present to the school board to explain?
Yes, so, we've been in contact with them over the past month or so, specifically trying to present. And that is to hopefully start a formalization process of setting up some agreement to build that parking lot. It's been identified as a need by the school, by the principal, so we want to put that in front of them. And then, the second thing is, is just to show up, answer questions, educate the community on what's going on. I mean, the school has, the West Side Union School District has already installed ground-mounted solar panels, just like ours, on their high school. So, I mean, they're aware of it, they're aware of the development that's--
Different school district--
--the concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, they've embraced it already. We're looking, hopefully, they'll embrace us as a neighbor next to them, and hopefully we can, you know, generate a mutual, mutually benefiting relationship.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Why did you decide on a parking lot? Were they using property that you had bought for the development?
Correct. So, currently, the school and a lot of the parents park on our property on the north side of, or no, I'm sorry, the south side of 90th. So, what we're doing, even though it's on our property, we want to try and be a good neighbor and, you know, make sure there's a safe drop-off zone for the children.
And that would be a paved area instead of what it is now, or is it paved?
Yeah, so, right now, it's just a dirt kind of area on our property. What we would be doing is, what we've discussed doing is working with the school to put a paved parking lot inside and on their property.
So, as the parents who drop their kids off or park in those dirt areas that you are offering to pay for them, would you say that that would lower the amount of particulate emissions, dust that would arise?
Yes, that is definitely one thing. We've done studies throughout this area, and the paving tends to decrease the particulate matter, which is often a concern to the community.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yes, Chairman Voss. My question, you know, goes back almost to when we looked at 1107. I meant to ask about the jobs that you bring to the area at the project's peak, and I understand that these two will bring 250. Is there some sort of time moratorium as, if I'm a new person coming in and I'm applying there, would I have had to have lived in this area six months, a year, five years, to be considered a local hire? Or is that a requirement to be a local hire?
That's definitely not a requirement. We're looking just for local business people. We support people that are coming in, support people that have been here for 40 years.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Just to be clear and so folks understand the process, this matter was, the SEQA portion of this was distributed for public comment initially and closed July 10th. However, it was recirculated, and the comment period ended September 13th, which was last Wednesday, Thursday?
Correct.
Somewhere in there?
Mm-hmm.
So, since that time, these in excess of 1,000 pages of correspondence and comment have come to the city as well as to this body. Given the volume of that and what you've reviewed and your responses dated the 14th that you shared with us, are you still of a mind that you accept the conditions that the city is proposing to impose on these projects?
Yes, we've--
As they stand?
Yes. We've read and agree to the terms and conditions.
All right. I'll reserve my questions to you until we hear the public and the staff responses, and I may have some, but they may be covered, so I don't want to be redundant and waste a lot of time with this. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Ludicki, we have speakers, I would imagine. We're ready to hear them.
Mel Lane.
Mr. Lane. Welcome back.
Thank you, Chairman Voss. It's a pleasure to be here and to represent another project for the Antelope Valley. I just want to take a couple of, make a couple remarks that I won't take much of your time. There seems to be the attitude, though, that somehow the whole Antelope Valley is going to be covered in solar panels, and it's going to be one of those things. But as you mentioned, Chairman Voss, about a lot of track maps were approved at one time during the boom out here and have since expired, and the projects are not going forward. It's also going to be the case with a lot of projects, you know, that will never make it through the queue. And what I mean by that is that Southern California Edison tells me that they have more applications to come online than their whole system generates. Get it? I mean, they're talking about their whole system all over. So, that being the case, we have a 4,500-megawatt transmission line, and most of the power from that is going to be coming through, from the Tehachapi region through the wind up there. So, that leaves a very small amount that can really go online here as a comparison. So, I just wanted to try to make that, to try to educate the public, that once that line is filled up, the projects will stop. And I've talked to Edison about it. They say it will take at least 10 years before we could ever get approval through the Public Utilities Commission to be able to build another transmission line. So, it'll be almost the same thing as we're experiencing now in building. The projects have stopped, and they won't start up again until the economy allows it to happen. Be the same way with the transmission line. Once it's filled up, it's filled up, nobody else can come on it. Now, there are a few small projects that come on 60, I think you call it 66 KVA line. There'll be some of those that will still come on, but they'll be at a small amount and not generate like we're seeing with some of the larger farms. I just want to make that apparent, and Mr. Ludicki brought up a power purchase agreement. Power purchase agreement is, they're difficult to get, and you have to get in line. You don't know whether you'll get it or not until the proper time. So, I think that we need to alleviate people's fears that this is going to be something that's going to go on and on, and it's going to be something that's going to be an overwhelming kind of thing for the community. Just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Another speaker, please?
John Dewar.
Welcome back, Mr. Dewar.
Thank you. There seems to be a great bit of concern over the impact during construction that these jobs will have. From experience in dealing with some of the other solar companies, they go to extreme measures to make sure that the noise levels are kept down, that the dust levels are taken care of, that the jobs are safe, and that they can be welcomed into the community, even so far as, you know, the drive-in on public highways, they tend to limit what can be done there by their employees. So, in considering all this, yeah, basically, that's what needs to be considered as well. They do do a very good job at trying to make the impact very low level. Thank you.
Thank you. You have another speaker, Mr. Ludicki?
Marshall Chance.
Mr. Sch-- all right. He's already left.
David Gomez.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it short. Just a reminder, I'm with the National Electrical Contractors Association and IBW Local 11 Los Angeles. I do basically business development. These two projects I'm in favor of, I think there will be eventually a local hiring component. On past projects, we have IBW and NICA done with our contractors, tried to do 30% local hiring. We've always been over the bars, average is 45%. I believe these past solar projects that are going right now are a little higher than that. So, we're about giving careers, and thank you.
Know a little about water, too, don't you, Mr. Gomez?
Yes, I do.
Thank you for your comments. Another speaker?
Brooke O'Hanley.
And I'm sorry I didn't get the last name. Oh, hey.
O'Hanley.
O'Henry?
O'Hanley.
O'Hanley, I'm sorry.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Brooke O'Hanley with Lozo Drury LLP. I represent Launa Local Union Number 300 and its members living in Los Angeles County regarding the summer solar, springtime solar project. As discussed in our detailed comment letter supported by expert evidence, there is at least a fair argument that the project may have significant adverse environmental impacts. An EIR is therefore required under SEQA to fully analyze these impacts and to propose feasible mitigation measures and project alternatives. We request that the planning commission decline to certify the revised IS MND and direct staff to prepare an EIR. We had our team of experts, including Matt Hegeman, the former director of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, Western Regional Division, and Dr. Sean Smallwood, an expert ecologist, review the revised IS MND. They both concluded that there is a fair argument that the project may result in significant adverse environmental impacts. I will highlight three issues. First, Mr. Hegeman reviewed the construction emissions estimate from Site 1 and concludes that the emissions are likely underestimated when compared to similar projects in Southern California and Site 2. For example, the emissions estimate for the Soul Orchard Project, which is to be constructed on less than half the acreage and which will generate less than half the power, are more than six times higher than the estimate for Site 1. Second, Mr. Hegeman concludes that the revised IS does not adequately address the impacts of project construction on nearby residents and schoolchildren at the Delsur Elementary School. The revised IS does not acknowledge that project construction will generate dust that can be transported by wind and adversely affect nearby residents and schoolchildren by causing health effects, including aggravating asthma and decreasing lung function. The applicant should be required to prepare a dust control plan to be included in a draft EIR. Third, Dr. Smallwood concludes that the surveys conducted during three days in May 2011 to assess habitat suitability and to detect special status species were insufficient because they, many species would have been missed because of the time of year or day the surveys were conducted. The site visits would have missed, for example, merlins and mountain plovers, which would have been far to the north during May. In the absence of adequate surveys, there is a fair argument that the project may have adverse impacts on these species. In conclusion, we urge the planning commission to find that the revised IS MND is inadequate and require a draft EIR to be prepared and only then consider the project for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have some questions for you--
Okay.
--if you'd care to respond.
Okay, I hope I can answer your questions.
The experts you've identified, have they ever visited the project sites?
They have not, they have not visited the--
Thank you.
--sites, okay.
The PM 10 issue you're citing?
Mm-hmm.
Where's the project located that you orange, what was it called?
Soul Orchard Project. It's located in, I believe, in the general area of the project site.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Have another speaker?
Virginia Stout.
Take your time, no hurry, Ms. Stout.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Go right ahead.
Can you hear me? Can you speak up? All right. Thank you very much. I would like to start with the idea that, just, I guess it would be more in the opinion before I commit to some facts, that of the differing viewpoints that I feel the City of Lancaster and those who live outside of the City of Lancaster's vision. Now, for instance, Sunset Magazine had this spring in one of their magazine, where they did a major article on the most endangered scenic areas, and their top three, one of them was the Mojave Desert. And the reason given was the impact of all the solar panels would just destroy the view, would destroy the scenic wonders of this. And to me, it just said that Lancaster would like to be a part of this reputation, whereas Antelope Bakers and the people of the West Side might someday like to have had the area listed as one of the most scenic places to visit if you are a tourist, to come out there, instead of looking and driving around and seeing prison-like compounds that are pretty sterile, that are just surrounded by trees and with homes in between on that. So, anyway, that's just my comment on that. So, but I'd like to start out with the, have any recreational trails that have been GPSed and turned into the county, been evaluated, to be taken into consideration where they're going to meet up with trails? And other projects, we have a trail that runs along 95th Street, and we even negotiated with Standard Pacific to actually be able to go around there when they came in, and we're putting their, they're taking over from Larwin at that time. I know the county has some trails that they were looking at around 90th Street proposed, and we don't see, I don't see anywhere in here where that's taken into consideration, and that's something that's going to be lost. Okay, the next one is, as far as the dust goes, I don't know, I've not seen anything. You don't seem to require anything as to how it's going to be, the dust will be suppressed. There's hydroseeding, which is not working out at First Solar, the world's largest solar company, traded on the New York Stock Exchange, they've had a terrible time with dust out there. Anybody that's worked out there can tell you, they've been sent home because of the dust. The hydroseeding isn't working, they've put chemicals on it, and when the dust just blows, when the wind blows, it's just a mess out there. We're worried about the herbicides, because we don't know what's going to grow underneath it, but they have to do to keep the vegetation down, if that will be in the wind, if that's going to blow downwind to the students. And the last one is, please require an environmental impact report on this. The idea that it can go before the school board and just inform people shows a lack of respect for the students and the parents who are going to be impacted by all of this. And so, you know, there's, you have tons of industrially zoned land. Please offer that to the solar companies when they come in. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Stout. Another speaker?
Don Dykhouse.
Dawn Dykhouse.
Welcome back. Hello. Again, my name is Dawn Dykhouse, and once again, I don't think I need to read the entire statement I made at the beginning of the evening, that would take forever. But I would like to once again ask you to consider the fact that although everyone says, oh, there's not that many, it doesn't seem like that many maybe to the people in the City of Lancaster, but I've noticed they've taken down the map showing where all of these are. If, I'd like you to reflect back on that map and see exactly how much of the area out where we live is being covered with solar panels. It's quite a large area. So I'd like you to first kind of take that into consideration. Now, I'd like to point out a couple of things. We actually spoke with the school district on the, I believe it was the 11th of September, and they told us that they have not heard from Silverado in at least a year, was her words. So I'd just like to make you aware of that. And we also know that the jobs that they're claiming they're going to create are only temporary. I do know of a couple of people who live out in Antelope Bakers who are currently employed at a different solar. They are constantly being laid off. They work a few months, they get laid off. They work a few months, they get laid off. That seems like an issue to me. They can't, I mean, just saying, oh, we're going to create jobs, does not mean they're long-term jobs, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration. And someone did mention earlier that the property next to a previously approved site near Avenue J, as if to sort of say, not, don't worry about it, the property next to it is not zoned for this sort of thing. Well, in this proposal, it does speak about rezoning a portion of this. So that obviously concerns us out there for the argument that says, it's not zoned next to this site, so don't worry about them going out any farther. Not all of these two sites are currently zoned for this either, but it's being asked that they rezone them to approve them. So where does it stop? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Another speaker?
Danan Shaughnessy.
Welcome back.
Thanks. Okay, going through the chicken scratch, sorry, I've been kind of trying to keep a few notes as we hear things going along. They keep going ahead and asking, making the statement that not all of these things are going to become fruitful on all of these projects, but they're still expecting us to go ahead and be okay with more and more and more of them making the layouts for those particular areas and designating. As they said, this is something that is going to be built, it's not, as long as you guys approve it. I would recommend highly that they notice the difference between West Side Union School District and the Antelope Valley High School District. The West Side Union School District is actually elementary and junior high. They don't have any parking facilities at Delsir School at all, and I drop my kids off at 7:15, you'll be in line till like 7:35, when you finally get through that line, that's enormously long for a fairly small school. They did take the map down, what makes it a little harder to go ahead and explain where it is on that map. If anybody had pointed it out, it was smack dab in the center of it, the little tiny area there that goes all the way from kindergarten to eighth grade. So we have several kids, these are young, developing kids, there's a lot of asthma problems. I do know that there's been some information on valley fever that's in the dirt out in the fields that are out there. It's just, there's so many things to look at. If we could get you to please, as before stated, bring in an environmental survey and actually request that that really be done, I think that there'd be a whole lot more details brought to your attention if you're doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Dolly Cannavan.
Ms. Cannavan, welcome back. Take your time.
I just wanted to bring up the fact of valley fever. I was wondering if anybody has tested the soil to see if valley fever is in that soil. And when the wind blows, it doesn't necessarily mean that these kids are going to get valley fever right away. It could be several years later where this valley fever can show up in these children. So my concern is the valley fever because I had a dog from my backyard who had valley fever, and she was always quite sick. So that's just my concern on the valley fever. If someone could just check to see if it's in the soil, I'm sure it is.
Thank you for your comments. Another speaker?
Yes, Robert Kerikas.
Welcome back.
Thank you. In this particular report that you have in every other one, you keep saying that there are no migratory, wildlife migratory corridors. And yet, it's well-recognized that this is a corridor for birds from all over. I put together this little report that I put together because it's to show that we do have migratory birds, and it's recognized. It's recognized by the county. The county recognizes this, I don't know why the city doesn't recognize it. It's part of the problem that we're talking about. There's no consideration for the flight of these migratory birds that are going through our area. You people don't recognize it. And you say in every one of your reports, and yet it's widely recognized. Audubon recognizes it, American Bird Conservancy recognizes, the Planning Department of the County recognizes it, but you people don't recognize it. I don't know why. It seems to me if you had added that in there, that then we'd have to be looking at this all a little differently. We have the highest rate of valley fever here. It's not the only one fungal problem we have. We have other fungal, skin diseases and so on, and bacterial affect not just people but animals. I've had my dogs and my cats have all kinds of problems from the dust. You don't live in Antelope Bakers. It's one of the most worst blowing area for wind that there is, and the dust can come through very thick. So I don't think you're thinking about things like that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Another speaker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Terry Hartman.
Hartman? Welcome back.
Thank you. I just have a few things that I wanted to say, and that is several, you had stated that according to the plans that trees have to be part of the mitigation in order to put in stuff like. Silverado's already stated that they'll try and put it up on one side as long as it doesn't interfere with the panels themselves. So according to Silverado's own plans, that's not a part of it, the trees aren't. Also, another thing is too, I know several people who work for these solar companies or around these solar companies, and this is going in very close to school, and the requirements that they have to have in order to work around these panels, wearing long sleeves so they don't get sunburned, you know, taking precautions, the heat, the water. There's been places where people have been taken out because of heat. I don't even, I mean, we're surrounding our school, we're suggesting our kids to this on a daily basis, and we're acting like it's not a big deal. The noise, the dust, the solar panels themselves, we're supposed to subject five-year-olds up to, what, 13-year-olds in developing stages to this every single day, and we're not considering it? And just a little side note, going back before to Mr. Hall, septic tanks, leach lines, a little bit of water out compared to 4,000 gallons of water dumped from a water truck, it's not comparable. We're talking about huge amount of water that's being put down on the ground at one time. There isn't a septic tank or a leach line that would ever produce that kind of water to go into the groundwater. So that's just, I think we need to think about our kids more than who's right and who's wrong. Thank you.
Do we have another, thank you. Do we have another speaker, please?
Colleen Schiller.
Evening, Ms. Schiller.
Hi. I'm always looking for my husband's mother when I hear that.
You're what?
I'm always looking for my husband's mother when I hear that. My feeling on this is that these power plants are really not even for the local communities. They're not to any benefit, especially to those of us that live in the rural acres. They're here for the LA basin, people who let their lights burn all night, leave their buildings lit up. And I think that this isn't about the environment at all and people really caring about the environment. If there wasn't big grant monies and subsidies to build these plants, they wouldn't be here. No one would be out here building them for the altruistic thrill of helping the environment. They're just not cost-effective, they're not going to produce power that's affordable without subsidies. And I'm distressed that everybody is willing to destroy the rural way of life, which is the way our forefathers lived, who came here early on. We farmed and lived the rural life. We've heard today kind of that septic tanks are quaint, you know, everybody visited their grandparents and they had one. And as an Orthodox Christian, I understand the meaning of Byzantine anything, Mr. Ludick. I really do. So I think what I would like to see is a serious, serious environmental statement done about this project and all the cumulative projects. You're talking about putting trees around things. When you develop, and we've heard a lot about developments and tracks that were approved, around those tracks, you have to put up cinder block walls to improve the visual field around these housing developments. You don't go out here and see a housing development with no cinder block wall around it. So why are you so hesitant to force these people to put in trees? It's not the fences, it's what lies beyond the fences. And there's something that speaks deep in the heart of us who live here. We love the wide open spaces. We love the wind blowing in our hair, the tumbleweeds, the snakes, the animals, whatever. And to see these coming out here and just populating our whole area randomly, you're ruining our property values and you're ruining our lives, and you're depriving us of the chance to have our children learn how to farm and raise animals and continue to provide food and a way of living for the American people. These plants don't provide permanent jobs, but maybe our children can learn how to provide food and agricultural projects if our whole agricultural way of life is not destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Have another speaker?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right then. We will leave the public hearing open, and I, before we listen to the staff report, Mr. Deputy City Attorney, could you please define for us what a fair argument is under, as purported by Ms. Henry?
I can't give you a, are you looking for a bright line definition? There isn't one. A fair argument is a fair argument, and...
Well, it's certainly used 15 dozen times in the correspondence we received from her law firm, so I mean, it must have some basis in either some adjudication or some...
It would be, it's much like defining the term reasonable in the law. There are a number of laws that use the term reasonable, and to determine whether or not something is reasonable, like a fair argument, you'd have to look at the facts of any particular case. There is no bright line standard. I, it's your, you are making the determination as...
So there's no court cases that define it?
Oh, I'm sure that there's a large body of cases that define it, but those cases are going to be limited to those facts. You're determining whether or not you believe there's a fair argument. So unfortunately, I can't define what that is for you. You have to determine whether...
But you have indicated what our role and responsibility is.
Correct. If you were to determine that there is a fair argument, you could not recommend for approval the mitigated negative...
I understand that. I was just, you know, that's why I'm asking the question, so besides the six of us that are sitting here, the folks in this audience understand something about the process because it's obviously new to a lot of people.
And I wish I could provide you clear guidance.
But you've given me enough guidance. I understand my responsibility. Thank you. So the public hearing is still open, and I'd like to suggest that staff address the comments that were made by the folks, and then if the applicant needs to rebut, then we'll let him. If that's all right with everyone? All right? Go ahead. Whomever.
Okay. First, I'm going to start with the rezoning. That was brought up by, I believe, Dawn Dykhouse. The project sites are currently zoned for urban residential uses, even with the development agreement going away. So if it expires or you choose to recommend the council to have it withdrawn, terminated, whatever words you would like to use, the underlying general plan designation and zoning is for urban residential uses, so that's single-family homes on 7,000 and 10,000 square-foot lots, and that would not change. So any developer could come in, and they could submit a tract map, and they would be in accordance with the zoning and the general plan designations for urban residential uses. So this is really a discussion between, do you want urban residential uses there, or do you want alternative energy uses there? It's not a discussion between, do you want alternative energy uses and open space farming? That for the portions of the project site that are designated for urban residential uses, without you changing the zoning, that designation stays.
So the underlying land use would not be a conditional use permit, it would be a use by right.
Set it a tract map.
It would be a use by right. To agree?
Yes. You would basically have the ability for someone to come in, request a tentative tract map on the site, and, you know, assuming that that map complies with all of the requirements of the city subdivision ordinance and zoning, yes, you would be bound to approve that. And actually, you know, further stating, and I think we pointed this out in the report, right now, there are maps on those existing lots or those existing sites that total some 700 single-family lots, and that is part of the Delsir Ranch project that was originally approved, not only on these portions, but another 600 some-odd acres that exists right in that immediate area that, you know, altogether equals about 2,500 single-family residential lots plus parks, commercial and other facilities.
So by, a portion of the recommendations tonight would extinguish those rights?
It would, it would remove or rescind the development agreement to allow the city to actually redesignate and rezone the property. The city is prohibited from doing that currently under the development agreement.
And when you say the city, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, assuming we make a recommendation, if at all, and ultimately, it's the city council makes the final determination.
That is correct. They would still have to hear it.
Everybody understands that whatever we choose to do, whatever that may be, it's ultimately the city council will make the final determination. Right?
That is correct, on the...
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead, Justin.
That's okay.
Yes.
With respect to trails, that Standard Pacific had had worked out with Antelope Bakers, the city does have a master plan of trails and bikeways, and it goes all the way out to, I believe, 110th with proposed trails. Additionally, larger projects that will be coming down the pike, we are asking the developer to put in trails and screening to make it have a more real, I can't talk, rural feel. With respect to dust control, the dust control plan is a requirement prior to pulling any permits. That dust control plan has to lay out exactly how dust will be controlled, and the Air District has specific requirements of what needs to be in it. The applicant is also working with the Resources Conservation District and their Dust Busters program to identify mitigation measures that would be effective for controlling dust because they have seen what doesn't work at some of the other projects. because they have seen what doesn't work at some of the other projects. And so the idea is to not repeat the things that don't work.
So what's, jurisdictionally, what does this commission have the power to do relative to the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District and their rules and regulations?
Can you, can you start over again, because I missed the first part of that statement?
What, what authority does this commission have over an applicant, and I'll restate it, relative to the rules and regulations of the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District?
You cannot make those regulations be less than, but you can definitely make them more stringent than.
But for instance, what would be more stringent? Than, than, than these projects are proposed, the conditions that they're currently proposed? I can't think of any, but maybe...
I can't either, but I mean, that is the, the authority the commission has, and on any resource or any impact, they, they can't make a regulation less stringent, but they can make it more stringent if it is possible.
So if we decided, for instance, to condition the project that, on Site Two, excuse me, Site One?
The one around the school or the other one?
One relation, the one adjacent to the school property, which is on Avenue H, is what I'm getting to. If we decided that we wanted to condition this project, that basin paving to appropriate standards be installed on the frontage of H...
You could do that.
That impacted the school, which is currently an option, if I read the condition right.
We, we have required them to provide a paved access to the site. The preferred route, because it's shorter, is from Avenue I north along 100th Street West to the project site. That also means that...
Point is, though, if we decided to condition a number of hundreds of feet of basin paving on...
You could do that.
On H to accommodate the concerns that folks may have raised relative to access and circulation for Delsir School, we have that in our power?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry, interruption.
That's okay. With respect to migratory bird corridors, a wildlife corridor is something that connects two isolated patches of habitat. Now, we don't have isolated patches of habitat that this is connecting. It does not mean that birds are not using the area or the project site. It simply means there is no established corridor connecting two isolated areas of habitat. With respect to trees, the project sites are being required to be landscaped around the entire perimeter, and they need to go to a height that screens the development and the fencing. If it can be done with tall trees and that works for the developer, that's great, but it is not a specific requirement. We have not at this time told them what plant material they need to use. With respect to construction emissions, there is a reason why Site Two has higher air emissions, and that is because we assumed for the air emissions calculation that the roadway was unpaved, and they were driving on that road, and that generated the PM10. That is not the case as it's moving forward, so the, the air emissions will be less. You know, if there are projects in other jurisdictions that are smaller size and have less megawatts and they have significant impacts, it may be due to the thresholds established by the air district they are in. It may be due to the extent of their project description and what they plan on doing, but they really are not comparable.
And so, if the, if the commission decides that, that there is no option relative to the paved access to this project, that it becomes 100th Street from Avenue I North, and that a certain amount of basin paving relative to Avenue H in front of the school to the satisfaction of the city engineer, the PM10 issue just goes away. What about the, the issue of additional biosurveys? I personally have some experience in some of these issues, and I've heard, heard it said many times, that you need more, more study, more analysis. And ultimately, more study and more analysis was an expenditure of a whole lot of money to come to the same conclusion. The protocols outlined by the California Department of Fish and Game are extensive and thorough, in my opinion. Do you disagree?
No, I would agree with you.
So what has, issue is raised, what has the folks that provided the analysis failed to do?
I don't believe they have failed to do anything. They did a literature search, which identifies, and the database they're searching is maintained by Fish and Game, and it records occurrences of different species that have been reported to them. So if someone or biologist is not reporting occurrences of a certain species to Fish and Game, of course, it is not going to be in the database that they search, but it's a starting point. It gives people an idea of what has been identified in the area. The biologist did a survey, they mapped the project site vegetation as to what vegetation is out there. They did it at a time that is most likely to actually have vegetation out here. We're not going to have, you're not going to survey in January to determine what kind of vegetation is in the Antelope Valley, nor are you going to survey in October, September, because it's all going to be dead. They did the surveys, they mapped the vegetation on the site, they listed all of the species that were observed, both plant and animal, and they made, I will say, they did make some assumptions based on the fact of what was in the literature search, habitat on the project site, because you are not going to have species that don't have suitable habitat present. And based on what they saw, they made recommendations. That is how we do all biological reports within the city.
Just because we always do that, does that mean that there...
That doesn't mean there isn't room for improvement or change.
Okay. I read in some of the literature relative to the environmental assessments and risk management standards, which was not raised tonight, relative to ASTM E152705, calling out the risk of chemical contamination because of farming.
Mm-hmm.
Would you care to comment on that?
The project sites were reviewed by a qualified Phase One Environmental Site Assessment preparer. That included historical aerial photograph reviews, site visits, review of databases, talking to different entities, whether they're property owners, previous property owners, fire department, City of Lancaster, going through all of the permits, and doing a site walk, looking for areas that would be an environmental concern. This, obviously, a portion of the site is used for active agricultural uses, and there was no evidence that he is improperly using any pesticides or chemicals on the project site. Everything that's being used for the alfalfa farm is being done in accordance with existing regulations. The other portions of the site were previously used, as far as we can tell, based on aerial photos, for agricultural purposes in the past. But there is no evidence that pesticides or chemicals were improperly used. The vegetation's not stained, it's not dying, it, there is no evidence of that. Additionally, there are no occupied structures on the site. So if pesticides have been previously used on the project site, there is a standard for remediation for, if you were putting houses on the site, or if you were putting a commercial development on the site, and I believe the report you're referencing is the Phase One that was done for the Walmart property, and that is an occupied building. There are no occupied structures on these sites, and therefore, those standards do not apply.
Actually, they did a Phase Two. Are you aware of any, any evidence presented by any expert reflecting studies done by the Department of Toxic Substances Control relative to developments in our community where we've, where contamination has been identified?
Within the entire community?
No, this type of property.
The DTSC has, that DTSC has actually conducted? No.
Neither have I. I just, I'm certainly aware of a number of sites that have been analyzed on Phase Ones and Phase Twos, and processes have taken place and determined that there was non-detect on all of them. So, we recently received late, not late correspondence, I don't call it late, less than timely correspondence from the California Department of Fish and Game, and that correspondence relates to surveying techniques and policies and procedures relative to the burrowing owl and Swenson Hawk. The conditions we've imposed, or proposed to impose on this project, meet those requirements as outlined by CDFG?
As far as I am aware, the preconstruction surveys for burrowing owls are pretty standard, especially when there are no burrowing owls found on site at this time. The Swenson's Hawk survey, preconstruction survey, will be done in accordance with the Swenson's Hawk protocol established by Fish and Game.
Okay. But those little burrowing owls do show up.
They do.
They do?
Hence the need for the preconstruction survey.
You bet. Okay. That's all I have at this point, if anyone else has anything. Questions or comments from anyone?
I'd like to point out a couple of things. Avenue I, when I was younger, was, I always wondered why it was so mounded up. They actually built Avenue I quite high as it went out there, and it was because quite a bit of that area out there was swamp, it was underwater. We used to have artesian wells at one time, and that was what allowed our valley to bloom into this great agricultural area. But as agriculture came around, we discovered that 70 acres pumps 500 acre feet of water a year out to grow. So consequently, the water table kept dropping. So we've had a huge impact on our valley from what it used to be years ago to what it is today. And we're actually going to have less farming with these PV farms in, and maybe the water table will start to come back, and our valley could become green again. Now, that's just an observation from somebody that's been here all my life, because I have seen changes. The theater on Avenue H used to be quite a swampy little area. There used to be a line of water that ran from Palmdale to Lancaster. The west side of town used to be quite a bit underwater, but it's not that way anymore. So I do like to see, I don't like to see agriculture being taken away, because it is a way of life. One person at another meeting said, if they take out the alfalfa field, it's going to change the environment. It's going to change it back to what it was, because the alfalfa farm itself changed the environment. But to go back, it is going to be back to what it was in the first place, a desert, and a gradually re-greening desert as we quit pumping so much water out of the water table. So farming does have quite an impact on our valley, it has. I think it's about 70% of the water that's pumped out of the ground is used for agricultural, and it's leaving less and less for residential uses. So we're running into a problem with that. So there is quite an impact from farming. I don't like to see the rural lifestyle go away. It's one of those things that the valley's noted for. So anyway, I thought I'd just mention that. There has been a change in our valley, and it can be related to the farming and agricultural.
The French, they were up on Alfalfa Ranch, and can't afford to ranch anymore. It's, it's a sad way of life, but we have to look towards the future also. So, you know, it's one of those situations, excuse my French, damned if you do, damned if you don't, kind of thing.
Well, I think as Mr., someone pointed out tonight, that the options that we consider do not include, do nothing, unless there is clear evidence that whatever analysis is done, unless there's clear evidence that, that the impacts cannot be mitigated. And I have seen nothing tonight that shows me that identified impacts by experts is sustained by, by any real evidence. Clearly, from the, from the opponent of this project representing a laborers' union indicates that their own experts have not visited our community. Leads me to believe that folks, that they represent, may not be at all serious about the environmental impacts. They may be more serious about what they can extract from the applicant. That's my editorial comment. So with that, I'll ask, if anyone else has any comments, I will ask the applicant if they care to rebut anything or add any comments that they care to. Mr. Bean?
Thank you. I just want to clarify a couple of things. You know, this 850-page comment letter came a couple of days before the hearing. We did some due diligence on our part to research into the facts of what was presented, and many of it's unfounded. The, I guess we can start off with Hageman's construction emissions estimate, six times higher than emissions in Soul Orchard. So being a geologist, you know, we all sign up for the PG, or it takes a lot of work to get to that point, and clearly, this gentleman has significant experience. But when you're looking at construction emissions, particulate emissions, you have to take the site for what it is. The Soul Orchard project is not in the Antelope Valley, it's in San Diego. That's different counties, different soils, a completely different environment. So you can't, you can't take one thing and then move it over to another area. That's, that's a big problem, and something that I find is very unprofessional. The other thing that I would note is that in the Phase Ones that were conducted in this area, we had a PG that's experienced in this area come and conduct the environmental assessments. They looked for recs, they looked at the potential for environmental releases, they went out to the site, they reviewed other cases, other tests that have been conducted in the area, the Walmart, everything that was cited. When they completed their investigations, they determined that there was no impact, it was less than significant, and this was reviewed by the Department of Toxic and Substance Control. They came to this conclusion. So it wasn't just, you know, this one person coming out here, looking at the site and making, evaluating all the facts present before them, and coming to some conclusion, pulled in from nowhere. This was someone that visited the site, looked at it, experienced it. Hageman never went out to the sites. He never looked at it. He's pulling arguments from different sites in different counties and coming to different conclusions that are unfounded. I mean, even when he starts addressing issues for significance threshold, saying that the air quality reports... the air quality reports didn't address sensitive receptors, the AVA QMD is based on the federal standards and significance thresholds for public health. These, this is what you conduct your study to determine, if you exceed this significance threshold, then you have a significant impact. That's what was done. We looked at the road as paved, we looked at it as unpaved. That's why there's a provision to pave one of the roads. That is why the site is so low in particulate emissions, because the road's paved. The geologists who looked at this and came to these conclusions clearly did not dig into the facts and came up with something haphazard and threw it on paper with his name on it. If it was stamped, it may be a problem. I want to address some of the other comments, too. I will let our biologist speak, since he's come all the way out here to just inform me on the corridors, but a couple of issues from the community, issues of getting laid off and rehired. That was something that happened in the first solar project because they didn't look and evaluate UL ratings for panels. So this is something that you can learn from other projects. These people have been hired back, they're actually expanding their workforce to catch up for problems that happen because of LA County inspectors and their failure to address UL certification. So we're aware of that. We're working with everyone to make sure that those problems don't come and inhibit Silverado from developing the projects. Future of solar throughout the valley, yes, we, we know that all the projects won't get built. These projects are coming online in different times. We work with utilities on a daily basis. Each project has different commercial online dates, CODs. Those are established when you work with them on the PPA and through the interconnection requirements. So what you're doing is you're establishing an online date, and yes, they're spread out, staggered throughout the next few years. Some projects, many projects won't get built. There's projects next to us that don't have PPAs. Those probably will not get built, and it's very hard to make your way into this industry if you haven't set the footwork and the foundation that Silverado did early on in the process. So I would say quite, a lot of our projects have PPAs in the area, they're real projects. That's why I feel that you guys should support our projects. Safety is a high priority to us. There was a comment about the children next to us at the school. We understand that construction workers are wearing long-sleeved shirts, you know, working under OSHA standards to make sure that safety hazards aren't presented at the workplace, wearing construction hard hats, wearing, hydrating themselves, taking proper breaks, all of that. That's going to be part of the construction process. Yes, these people are wearing this equipment as personal protective equipment because they're the ones constructing the site. We realize that there are children next to our site, and we're going to take the safety precautions for the children necessary during construction. Groundwater was already mentioned. It's 180 feet below ground surface right now. We're using such a little amount of water that that water that comes off our panels, first of all, it's not contaminated. I don't know where all of this is coming from. We're not using hazardous materials to clean our panels. It's not contaminated water, it's regular water that's washing off into the surface and then eventually maybe replenishing the groundwater, but considering the amount of water used, it's not going to replenish it significantly. And we're not significantly taking from the offer as well. I think, you know, that sums up quite a bit of it, but I would like our biologist to come up and share, share a little bit about the projects.
Before that happens.
Yes.
Before that happens, you heard my comments relative to Avenue H and a potential condition of some portion of basin paving to improve the frontage or of the school site relative to their circulation and so forth.
So, let me make sure I'm.
I'm not going to negotiate with you, I'm just going to tell you if that's imposed, would.
I just want to clarify what you're imposing. Is it a turnout structure or something like that?
You know, it's up to city engineer. I think it's whatever the city engineer would require, and it would be broad enough in a modification to the, to the site conditions to allow the city engineer to basically tell you the appropriate off-site improvements of Avenue H, and we would take away, assuming everybody agrees, take away the condition of improving the entire Avenue H and condition you to improve 100th Street from Avenue I and take that as your point of access.
Avenue I.
We're not negotiating, I'm just telling you.
Yes, we're willing to work with you. Yep. We would agree to that.
If we condition it, you'll be bound by it.
We will agree to it, correct.
I don't know what the appetite of my colleagues are, but as far as, as far as Westside Union School District, their board and, and what you may encounter and what you may end up agreeing to relative to, to what they may ask you to do is within their purview. However, if it interacts with the public right of way, the city is involved in.
Right.
And, and they're clearly aware of that, I'm sure, so.
As are we.
But whatever, I mean, that's, that's an independent, that's independent of us. We can't condition the school district and they, well, I guess we could, but it would be rather difficult, and I'm not sure we're in a position to do that, but they don't condition us. I think that's all I had, so we'll, we'll hear from your biological representative, and you can introduce him if you like.
So this is Mike McKenty from Chambers Group.
Good evening, Mike.
To start off, just wanted to give you some background. I'm not going to go through all of the comments in that 800-page document, but we've been a consultant to the city. The city has a very rigorous process to approve consultants that do biology work within the city limits. We've been on that list for as long as I can remember. We've performed these types of services back when the housing boom was going. We've done it for infrastructure projects, we've done it for solar projects, so we've been here, we know the city, we know the biological regions within the city. So some of the accusations and some of the things within that 800-page document were disturbing, but I don't want to go through those piece by piece. I don't think this is the time or the place for it. But listening to the comments today, I think everything was, was addressed except for one thing. Dr. Smallwood had a comment about mountain plover surveys, and when you do biological surveys on a project site, you focus on what's covered by law. If you're on BLM land, there are certain regulations. If you're on Forest Service land, there's different regulations. In May 2011, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service withdrew the proposed rule to list the mountain plover as threatened or endangered, so for that reason, we did not perform focused surveys for that species in the wintertime. Other than that, I think all the comments related to biological issues were addressed today.
Want to talk about golden eagles a little bit?
Sure. Golden eagles, they are common in the northern area of this valley, but in this project site and a 10-mile radius, there's not the right kind of cliff structures where you're going to find nesting habitat. So that's why they were not part of our, our analysis and why we didn't do focused helicopter surveys to look for them, because within that mile, that 10-mile radius, you wouldn't find cliff structures for them to nest on.
What about badgers?
Badgers are common in this area. Badgers would be protected by Fish and Game codes, but they're not a listed or threatened or endangered species.
Didn't encounter any, or are there dens?
Did not encounter any badger dens or burrowing owl dens when we were surveying.
But it's not impossible that a burrowing owl could inhabit the site.
Absolutely. I think of the project sites, I think burrowing owl is the most likely candidate that could, could come up, and that's why the project will have pre-construction burrowing owl surveys.
However, there's not, there's not many weirs out there nor irrigation stand pipes or anything of that kind on, on those properties, right?
There's not many, but sometimes when a project, when a field is not being used, sometimes the ground squirrels come in, you get a lot of ground squirrel activity and you can get burrowing owls colonize those areas.
So if, if the, if the commission decided, as the opponent suggests, that we should reject the initial study and mitigate NIGDEC and require a environmental impact report, what additional work would you have, or would you recommend if that was our position?
Because of the timeline to produce an EIR, the current studies.
That's not what I'm asking you. What additional studies or requirements, as, as an expert, would you suggest that we overlook?
Basically, we would repeat the exact same studies we did because they would have expired because of the timeline taken to do an EIR.
Would you have any expectation, given your work in this community, that field conditions would have, would change in any way?
No, not over that time period. Thank you.
Staff, any additional comments?
Yes, sir.
No more speakers? We're done, no speakers then. All right. So then, without objection, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and maybe consider a motion or talk about it a little bit. I don't know what your appetite is, my friends, but I'm of a mind that, that, well, first of all, we have to take up each recommendation separately. We can't take them as one motion. Am I correct, Mr. Adams?
That's correct.
So, if we want to condition, add a condition or amend a condition, it would be to either Resolution 1222 or 1223, as it relates to the Avenue H frontage and the Avenue I 100th Street, street improvement. Which one would it be?
It would be the last.
1223. Okay. So what I'm suggesting to my colleagues is that we consider motions on item one first, which is, unless somebody else wants to talk about something. All right. So it would be appropriate then to consider a motion on recommendation number one.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 12-19, recommending to the City Council rescinding of development agreement Number 89-01 on the subject properties.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, thank you. All right. Any further discussion or comment? Please vote.
That motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. All right then, item number two, recommendation number two, motions in order.
I also move to adopt Resolution Number 12-20, recommending to the City Council to approval of General Plan Amendment Number 12-02 on the same subject properties.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Further questions or comment? Please vote.
That motion also passes 6-0.
All right then, recommendation number three.
I also move that we adopt Resolution Number 12-21, recommending to the City Council approval of a zone change Number 12-02 on the subject properties.
Thank you. A second? Thank you. Any question, comment? Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
Recommendation number four.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 12-22, approving conditional use permit Number 12-08. The approval of CUP numbers 12-08 is not valid until the effective date of the General Plan Amendment Number 12-02 and Zone Change Number 12-02.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Question or comment? Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right. Recommendation number five.
I would like to discuss the language of modifying the condition on the, the school frontage.
And I'm not sure where that would go. We'll ask the city engineer to help us out here. Are we off base, Ms. City Engineer?
Well, I just would like to get a little bit more clarification from exactly what it is you're looking for as far as paving. Are you concerned with paving all the way to the site or just in front of the school?
No. My idea is sufficient street improvements around that school site that removes.
Pm. emissions.
The issues of traffic, circulation, impacts for now and into the future for a very long time.
Okay.
I'm not talking about major street improvements here, right? Because some of it has basin paving now, but some of it doesn't.
Correct.
So, you know, to me, it's, it's what you believe is reasonable.
Okay. I, I think it would be good to work with the school directly as well to get a handle on what their circulation patterns are. So if we can maybe word the condition, I guess giving me authority to work with the school and work out exactly the pattern that we're looking for on a paved roadway.
So in, in, in the condition list, wherever that should go. Let's see, where is it? So it would belong somewhere around the condition 14, or excuse me, no. So it would belong in Condition 6, as it relates, you're talking about dedication of right-of-way, that's, that's fine, but included in that, we would add adequate public improvements to the basin paving in Avenue H from the intersection of 90th to a point to be determined by the city engineer, the school district, to the satisfaction of both. Does that work?
Um, yes, that should work.
You comfortable with that? I can't restate it.
I, I would recommend that perhaps it be subject to the approval of the city engineer, with the idea that the city engineer would.
Obviously.
Well, and not additionally to the, to the, to the school district. We don't have any, we wouldn't have any mechanism to compel them to.
I can speak up.
We wouldn't have any, any mechanism to compel them to act on that, so the, the approval should be by the city engineer.
Only.
With instruction to the city engineer that, that she would, you know, should look to the school district to get approval from the school district, but imposing a requirement that the school district takes some sort of formal action to approve it.
Yeah, you're right. Okay.
It's problematic, yeah.
So Ms. Reyes, did you keep a copy of what I said? Sort of. Can you read it back? You rely on the audio tape to, to transcribe the minutes, and if we filed it up, we'll correct it when we approve the minutes at our next meeting, huh? Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Since you're making the motion?
Yes.
Yes. So you want to motion now?
As amended.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 12-23, approving conditional use permit 12-09 with the amendment of having adequate paving to be determined by the city engineer. The approval of CUP Number 12-09 is not valid until the effective date of the General Plan Amendment Number 12-02 and Zone Change 12-02.
Thank you.
I will second it.
Thanks. All right. Any further question or comment? Go ahead.
So the motion, you don't need to indicate the location because we talked about Avenue H. All right. I'd hate for you to have to go through that again, but I know that you had stated a couple of times the location from Avenue, 90th and Avenue H to a location to be determined by the city engineer.
So...
That's my understanding.
Right.
The amendment would be to the frontage in front of the school district to help with the circulation as approved by the city engineer.
And I'll second it again.
You want me to read it over, or is it...
I think we're good unless somebody is concerned about the amendment to the motion, to the amendment to the motion, or to the conditions, I should say, not to the motion. The amendment to the conditions of approval. Anybody concerned about what we've decided on? Ultimately, the City Council's got to approve it anyway, but...
I'm good.
You're good? Everybody good?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Motion passes 6-0.
Very good. Thank you. So for the benefit of the public, these actions that we've taken tonight relative to this project, Item Number 6 would be agendized at a future City Council meeting for their consideration, right?
That is true with respect to the first three actions.
Right.
The actions on the conditional use permits would only go to them in the event of a formal appeal being filed.
Unless they decide to call it up themselves.
That is another possibility.
Happened before.
We have seen that. Yes, we have.
All right. Very good. So we've cleared our agenda except for item, the first item, which is the residential zone updates. Is it your pleasure tonight to hear this and decide on it tonight? Ladies and gentlemen?
No.
I got one. Listen, you know, the first lady that speaks makes the rules. It's around my house, so I'll pay attention. You're ready to...
If possible.
To what?
I'd like to continue if possible.
If you'd like to make that motion, you know, it's in order if you wish to.
I wanted to say that we had the comments from Marvin and Matt Hemlin from Hemlin Realty, and the stuff that was in there that the city agreed with, could we get that in the redlined edition so when we redo this next time? Is that possible?
Anything's possible. At least, first of all, let me understand what we're doing. I've called the item, so it's a continued public hearing. The public hearing is open. Ms. Cook raised the issue of wanting to continue it. I don't know if that's a motion. Is it a motion?
That's my motion.
All right. She moves to continue this matter till the next regular planning commission meeting. Do I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Harvey. So any further questions, comments? All right. The motion to continue is in order, but discussion could be, we have received, since this is a public hearing, it is open, we have received additional written comments that staffs responded to. And what do you want to have done?
Well, the ones that the city agreed with, there was a few in there where they...
Staff has agreed.
The staff has agreed to, and I would like to see if we could make those slight corrections before the next meeting so there'll be less to deal with next time.
The anticipation is to finalize it and make a recommendation to City Council. That's...
Well, the commissioners have the form, so they can either add or subtract in the normal process we've been using.
To continue this matter for another month, is going to be a problem for anybody? Ryan?
No, Mr. Chairman, it would not. As a matter of fact, just from the standpoint of having time to discuss it fully at a meeting, we really don't have, that I'm aware of, any other items or any large amount of items scheduled for the October meeting.
Oh, I see.
So this would be the primary item if you were to continue it over.
Okay. Understand. All right. Any further comments?
Motion passes 6-0, and we will put it on the agenda for October 15th.
All right. There are some directors' announcements, or I should say, on the commission's agenda, which the directors added to our agenda relative to scheduling meetings for January 21st and February 18th, which are actual holidays that cities close, so...
Yep. Mr. Chairman, what we had discussed and what I would recommend is that you take action to reschedule those to the following Mondays. That's typically what we have done, so that would be to January 28th and February 25th, In regards to the statement on the agenda review special meeting, I would ask at this point, I think, that you just defer action on that. We will have a better idea come October's meeting whether we have much in the way of any item for the November meeting.
It says that on the 8th, there's a joint PC and ADC meeting?
Yes, there is.
So is this going to be part of the discussion we're going to have on the zoning, or is it going to be separate?
No, it would be separate because the joint meeting or the special meeting, joint special meeting, it's getting late.
It's on Transit Village, right?
Is on the Southeast Transit Village Planning Vision Plan effort.
So we would go into that room with ADC, have the presentation approximately. How long would that be?
We have actually set, your normal special meeting time is at 5:30. We've got an hour allotted. We have set basically from 6:30 to 8:30 in the city's EOC for the joint special meeting.
Then it's a public meeting.
It is open to the public, yes. They are welcome to come.
Might point out, the air conditioning is not on in the room. I don't know if you've noticed that, folks.
Oh, yeah.
In here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought I was in heaven. I thought it was freezing here. Sorry, sorry.
Warm.
It was great.
Yeah. 86, you're comfy, I know. Okay. So we'll defer that. Anything else, Mr. Ludikin?
No other announcements, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So anything from anybody else? Nope?
I just want to thank Jocelyn for spinning her birthday with us.
That's right. Oh, happy birthday. If I could sing.
And we've decided Raj owes us all dinner.
I hope Mr. Molly's all right. I hadn't heard anything from him, so I hope he's not ill or something. Anyway, wish him well. All right then. There is no public that appears to be in the room, but I'll announce public business from the floor for non-agendized items. Publics offered the opportunity to speak to us. Any public wishing to speak to us? No. So then, we stand adjourned to meeting, a special meeting for agenda review on Monday, October 8th at 5:30 PM in the planning conference room here at City Hall. Thank you very much, and thank you for your great work on this. You guys are just terrific. That's all there is to it.